Thank you for this wonderful day you bestowed upon us. Father, thank you for all the blessings that you. Lord, we ask that you be with us this morning as this board goes about conducting the business, great people of Guff County. Father, we were asking for a special prayer. Commissioner Whitfield going in tomorrow for a procedure. We ask that you hand on him and we ask that all here keep Miss Commissioner Whitfield in your prayers. Father's always bless our law enforcement, bless our first responders, bless our military. And bless the good and great people of Guff County. Lord, we ask this in your son's precious name, amen. Mr. Whitfield, would you do the honors of the pledge this morning, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to all. On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we thank you for taking time to come out and be with us this morning on our regular July the 25th, 2017 board meeting. As always, if anyone, if you're not on the agenda and you would like to come before the board at the end of the meeting, we have a time set aside for public discussion. If for some reason you are, if you have a reason to come before the board, we ask that right over behind Mr. Whitfield and there's a pad here, if you would kindly fill it out. It's just information to help our clerk over here who is the official mini keeper of the county board. But if you, if you want to come before the board, if you would, just simply fill this form out and hand it to Mr. Paul or Mr. Whitfield there and they'll forward it up to the board. But again, on behalf of the board, thank you. Okay. The first order of business is a consent agenda. And as I've said in prior meetings, this is one vote that counts, that covers multiple items. And we go to the audience, is anyone in the audience have any questions, concerns with the consent agenda? Anyone? Having none, then we'll go to our staff members. Is anyone on the staff, any staff member have any questions, concerns, questions? All right, thank you. Now we'll come to the board. Does any board member have any questions, concerns with the consent agenda? Having none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion over by Commissioner Quinn.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? No opposition to motion to accept the consent agenda. Passes five and O. All right. This time, ladies and gentlemen, we will go into the county staff business. As customary, we'll start right over with our county administrator, Mr. Butler. Do you have anything before the board this morning?
Not at this time.
This time, thank you, sir. Mr. Attorney?
Yes, good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Just a few items. The first was an announcement. The next Health Trust Board for the county and the Public Health Trust Community Meeting has been scheduled and noticed at the courthouse for August 2nd. It's next week. Just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention. Second thing I wanted to let you all know is Mr. Charles and Mary Ann Pitts have executed the deed for the stone mill property. That has now been recorded with the county clerk's office. We've received that property. There's a few conditions that we needed to satisfy, which we're working with the Pitts family. But it is now, as of yesterday, officially county property. And we've notified all department heads of that as well. Moving forward on that in terms of insurance, but I also know you all had some discussions with regards to the fire department. We can discuss it later. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add to that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, let me, gentlemen, if you don't mind. Ladies and gentlemen, this is, since I've sat on this board, this is the second time that we've had someone to donate property to the county. We had a gentleman gave us a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and ten feet of beach access out in front of the Veterans Park. Didn't have to, but did. But Mr. and Ms. Pitts, we need a fire, let me just give you a fire station up in the north end of the county. They graciously deeded to the county approximately two acres. I think it's 1.87, somewhere in there. And to go along with that, fine lady senator Denise Rimsley from down in the Sebring area. I've been talking with her. She's been right here to Port St. Joe. And I had an opportunity to meet her over in Tallahassee. And she went to bat for Guff County. And we've got $400,000 to build a new station. So we're gonna, we got property, didn't cost the taxpayers a penny. We didn't have to bought and buy it. And now we got $400,000 to build this. So that, one of these meetings that we go to and all, you know, it may cost you a dime for us to go, but when you can bring a dollar back, that's, that's pretty good. So that'll be great for the north end of the county up there. I just wanted to elaborate on that. And I, we all truly thank Mr. and Ms. Pitts. I invited them today, but they had other prior arrangements for other things and they were unable to come. But they wanted me to mention that. Mr. Attorney, anything else?
Yes, sir, one other item, and then I have some others later in the meeting. The last one was Warren and I had the ability to attend the last Port Authority meeting. We've gone to the last few. In last week's meeting, we had a discussion at that meeting with regards to an interlocal agreement that we've discussed with the Commissioners. And trying to find a cooperative effort to move forward on the heels of the economic development agreement you just did with St. Joe Company. So what we've come back with, in speaking with the staff and working and talking to each of you individually, is we're seeking now the ability to finalize an interlocal agreement with the Port Authority. Several goals, immediate goals that we have to try to establish. They've made a couple of requests for a cooperative effort on their financing of the note that you currently have with them for economic development, as well as some possible administrative support that the county can offer them. Also moving forward on joint applications with some of the funding sources that'll come up through Fsted, Ports Council, and some of the other state funding sources. It's a lengthy interlocal. I can hit the high points if the chairman and the commission have no objection to that. It's, it's an interlocal agreement. Again, the high points are it's a two-year agreement. It speaks to the whereas clauses of all the benefits. We've offered proclamations of support in the past. The port of Port St. Joe is strategically located. It's 21 miles from the regional airport. It's 57 miles from Northwest Florida International Airport. Port St. Joe Port offers direct and immediate access to our Gulf, Gulf intercoastal waterway and the channel dimensions of 12 by 125, approximately running 1,050 miles from Carabel to Brownsville, Texas. It offers immediate and direct rail access through the A and N Rail, also owned by St. Joe Company and operated by Genecy, Wyoming. It offers direct and immediate access to I-10 via Interstate 71. We go through several whereas clauses of the reasons, obviously, that support your past support for the Port Authority. And also, most notably, is the economic development and high-paying jobs that can be accomplished between your cooperative efforts with the Port Authority, as well as the St. Joe Company that you just recently did. As indicated, it's a two-year agreement and it offers a partnership and a cooperative effort that gives you all a structure and a platform to continue your discussions and your dialogue with the Port Authority, work with their board, and come back to you all with proposals on how we can make joint applications and find an opportunity to create jobs in the community. But with your permission and authorization for the chairman, we can offer it to the Port Authority's council for final review on their side and then ask and seek your authorization to execute that for that two-year agreement moving forward.
Two-year agreement, okay, gentlemen, any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers. All right, any other board discussion on this? This is a two-year. Anyone in the audience over this? Anyone? Not having none, is there any opposition? Motion pass five and O. All right, Mr. Attorney.
Nothing more at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Hammond.
Couple of things this morning, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Following up on that, we had good meetings, the staff had good meetings with each of the port commissioners and look forward to working closer in the future. Commissioner Rish brought up the fact that she would, the ports gonna make their payment very soon, their $10,000 payment. Would like that applied to the principal and not the interest. And we talked about it, the staff, the staff recommends that y'all accept that just out of a good faith nature, moving forward to, to accept the, the payment and apply it to the principal.
Okay. Oh, come on. Oh, okay. Come on in, join us. Here they come, coming this way, I think. Come on in, Ms. Brenda. Come on.
Need a motion on that, ma?
Yes.
So move.
All right, have a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Quinn. Any other board discussion? Anyone, anyone in the audience? Having none, no opposition, motion pass five and O. Mr. Hammond?
The next item would be the interlocal with St. Joe on building the road for the Swilly operation. We told you that we would come back when we were gonna spend money and we need authorization to spend up to $75,000, match dollar for dollar with the St. Joe Company to, to put that road in. The attorney is going to have one thing for, for Mr. Swilly to execute, which would be the guarantee, the guarantee of certain number of jobs for the county expending those funds. But we believe we can put this road in, in the, in the $150,000 range and we would like to start August 1st.
That's next. Yeah, okay.
It would be paid for out of Fund 117.
And that fund is just for the public?
It's the Industrial Park Fund, I think is the name of it, but it's.
Okay, all right.
Economic development money?
Yes, sir.
All right, good deal. All right, gentlemen?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, got a motion right over here. Commissioner Quinn. Second by Commissioner Macron.
No.
You did.
Yeah.
All right, gentlemen, any other, any further question?
Is me.
Macron, right here. Anyone in the audience on this? There's a road to hopefully get things moving forward here. Any opposition? Motion pass five and O.
Last thing I have right now would actually be item number eight. That was item number seven, so we can cross that off. Item number eight on the agenda.
All right, we're gonna cross seven out and let's get move to eight.
We had intended, staff had intended to have before you a comprehensive park policy that would include several of the parks that we talked about, but we have not had time to finalize that. We'll have it hopefully at the next board meeting. But on the Honeyville Park, we're, staff is recommending a $100 fee for, for outside agencies, nonprofits. Right now, the, the board has been waiving those fees. A $100 base fee and they, they would still have to put up their cleaning deposit, which would be refunded if, if they clean it. But we are, we're losing money. And again, we've talked to each of you individually. High light bills, very, very few payers. So we're trying to, to bridge that gap right now. And this, this will assist in the budget process.
This is just about to offset the light bill.
That, that is correct.
Light, power bill, okay.
Is this for everybody, nonprofits and all?
This is for everybody. Now, that's for nonprofits and outside agencies. Everyone else pays, I think it's $200 fee, that's correct. And the, the other thing that, that I would bring up is we would ask that the administrator be able to sign these instead of bringing them to the board. So if, you know, the fire department, project graduation, whoever requests those in the future, they did not have to come before the board, the chief administrator could sign off on these for the $100 fee.
Okay. All right, let's come here to the board. Any, any concerns? Yes, sir, Commissioner, Commissioner Whitfield.
I know we have a problem there and we got to try to even it out. What I would like to see this board do is table this for a month or two months now. I've met with Mr. Trailer and he's agreed to do so. If we can fit him to have access to that building and some of his duties, he don't mind. He's a good man doing a lot of work. And I would love to see just for a month or two, leave the motion in place, but table it for a month or two, because I think if we get that light bill down to $300, we wouldn't have this conversation. I more than believe it can be done. And the people, most of the ones where we waived the fee is to do with the women's club. It's to do with project graduation, where they try to keep kids there all night to keep them getting killed. We don't have a lot of places up there to meet or anything. And at that time, I would be full of favor doing whatever we need to do. But I don't think there's been any effort that I know of made to get the expenses down. I'm just saying, if that was $300 light bill, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So I would like to give it a month or two, whatever, table, not indefinitely, but let's table it for 60 days. And that's not long, that won't kill us. And see if there's not a way to get that bill down, have it checked out, because I think there is. And I, I really don't cotton face in these people from the women's club and from the school and the which they don't have a place to go up there. One of the few things they have. And if we could do that, I think it would smile greatly on us in the end. $100 is really not anything, but when you're taking it from people, it's donating and doing, they're doing things that we can't do. Their happiness, their partners with us and the people in this county try to help out. So that would be my feeling on it. You know, whatever the board decides is fine with me. We can't get it down and in control, but I don't think we've really even tried yet. So that's all I have on that.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any other, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just add that if, I asked Mr. Whitfield, so if we go ahead on and make the motion to table this for two months, are, are you okay if we come back in two months and we can't get it down?
Well, we need to, just leave it just as is. We just want a chance to.
Okay.
Solve it externally before we, you know, write it in stone, that's all.
I could, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yes, sir.
There's still gonna be a cost.
Oh, yeah.
No matter if it's a thousand or $300. I know in the city, we, I say Commissioner, but we established a minimum on some of our buildings in the city when I was on that board to, just to cover the cost, you know, because all the taxpayers have to pay for it, so just a thought there. Whatever y'all want to do.
Well, we'll. Mr. Rogers?
We've talked about it several times, you know, we've got to, at some point in time on some of these parts, we've got to start. I understand, you know, that one, they may be able to bring the bill down. Some of them we wanting to charge for where there's not actually a bill being created. It's just for the use and the convenience of the park, help maintain the upkeep and all that.
And I, in your district, act with Veterans Park.
Yeah, Veterans Park really is going to affect a lot of things, but yeah. You talking only the Honeyville Park?
Yes, sir, that's all I'm talking about.
You want to talk about?
I, I just believe we might can do it better. Sure it's going to cost us, but we knew that when we built the place. And, uh, got the ballparks. We got all these parks that are underfunded, number one, they're all are underfunded. We have to do the best we can. So, um, so even if we come back and we get it down and we have to charge a fee, I, you know, we might, it might be, the fee might be 50 instead of 100 or whatever. I'm just think we need to make an effort at behalf. Trailer would help me do that and he said that he would, I believe.
All right, sir, why don't you, if you would like to, make a motion, we just table this.
Yes, sir, I make a motion that we table this for two months. If we haven't made progress, we just go right back to the original motion. Just, you know, what's called five, $600, it's not a big thing when you're dealing with that many people. Personality, at the end of the day, we're about helping the people. And, uh, you gotta have money to do that. That would be my motion, that we table it for 60 days and see if we can get it down.
All right, that's your motion.
Then we go wherever.
Ms. Roberts, you got the motion. Yeah, all right, I hear a second.
I second.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any further board discussion? Let me say this, ladies and gentlemen. It costs and we had a, and we still have a good program, but when you exempt eight out of 10, you go in a hole and that comes out of our pocket, your pocket. Anyway, all right, anyone in the audience? All right, any opposition? Commissioner Whitfield's motion to table. Opposition, motion pass five and O.
Based on the, the motion of the board that just passed, we, we've got two requests now for waivers.
Yeah, I got them right here.
So I'd recommend that, that the board go ahead and waive those fees if that's the policy of the board.
I guess we don't have to waive when we didn't put the policy in place, do we, ma?
That's all right, all right. You want to, let's boom, 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 where they at? Know where they're next. You want to go ahead and, uh.
They're in the information packet, I believe it's the Guff County School Board.
I'm looking at them right here. You got the waiver for the Guff District Schools and for the, uh, Wewichko Women's Club. Let's just go ahead and cover that. Need a motion, we'll cover both of them with one motion. If that's, Mr. Attorney, is that acceptable?
Hold on, hold on one second. I'm out there abstaining from that one, so we might need to do them individually.
If, in, in your abstention, Commissioner, just state the purpose for the clerk's office.
Do we have to vote on?
All right, we'll.
If, if.
Policy's not in place.
Have to vote.
You have to vote.
All right, we'll do them, we'll do them once in time. Let's take the Guff District Schools out of the way. I need a, we got a motion here, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rogers, all right, any further?
I made a motion.
Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner Rogers. All right, any other board discussion?
I'm abstaining.
You're gonna abstain?
Actually, Guff County School Board is my employee.
All right, and get with Mr. Rogers. Ms. Roberts over here, you had to fill out a form there. All right, anyone in the audience? Trying to get through here, hurry along as much as we can. Any opposition? All right, for the Guff County School District. Motion pass five and O. The next one is the Wewichko Women's Club.
Make that motion.
Commissioner Quinn. Motion, I hear a second. I said, Commissioner Whitfield. All right, any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? No opposition, most pass five and O, that takes care of those two.
That's all I got at this time, Mr. Chairman.
I think we're still over in your neck of the woods.
That's all I've got at this time.
That's it? Okay. Ms. Carey? All right, let's swing right on around. Ms. Herring, have anything before the board, please? Oh.
That would've been bad.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning. If the Commissioners would like, I would like to propose a date for setting the final budget hearing. The final, we have set the trim, we have set the tentative as of September 12th. And according to TRIM, after reviewing dates, I would like to propose the final hearing be set for Thursday, September 28th at 5:01 PM, if that is acceptable.
That doesn't. There with school.
No, sir.
September the 28th, all right, gentlemen, we'll. Have to change it when we get a little closer. All right, that's, that's good. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, dear.
I made that motion that we accept that date, September 28th, 5:01, final budget here.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any other board discussion for this? No concerns. The opposition, it's not 5:01 on the 28th day of September for the final budget hearing. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you. Mark?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Two limited maintenance agreements for White City ditches that we need, that we didn't have, that we need done and one for Whispering Pine subdivision. If the board would entertain that and Mr. Butler will work together on it and get them signed.
Right. Mr. Attorney, can we have both of them, one vote? Him to hot.
So move.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Second by Commissioner Whitfield. Any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Not any opposition, none. Motion pass five and O. Is that all? Thanks, sir. Mr. Collinsworth?
Morning, Ms. Chairman.
Good morning to you.
We had a bid opening yesterday for bid 1617-34 for the mowers for the inmate crews. I recommend that we accept the bid from St. Joe Renall for $42,888.
1617-32 from.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four from St. Joe.
Renall.
What was that amount, Lee?
Forty-two, eight, eight, eight.
Forty-two thousand?
Eight, eighty-eight.
Eight, eight, eight and no change, all right. That's far, how many?
Twelve.
Twelve. Twelve. This is a 36-inch gag mower, am I correct there?
Yes, sir.
That should be our standard mower.
Yes, sir.
That's the only bid you got?
It's the only one we got.
What's your recommendation?
I recommend that we accept it.
Board members?
So move.
Any question? Second. Motion by Commissioner Macron, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any other board members? Anyone in the audience? Opposition, motion pass five and O to accept the St. Joe Renall bid for $42,888.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thanks, sir, is that all?
That's it.
All right. Mr. Just swing, all right, I've pretty much got everybody here. Mr. Yeager, you want to wait or you want to come on now? Or you just come on? All right, I'm working there.
I've got three or four items I just wanted to mention today. One, we have two appointments to the Opportunity Florida Board. I'm one of your appointees and I would recommend to the board that Leanna Sagans in my office take that other appointment so that the times that I can't be there, she can, she can take my place on that. So if the board would, would support that.
All right, give me a.
Motion that Ms. Leanna be, be on the Opportunity Florida Board.
Second. Second by Commissioner Macron. All right, any other board discussion? Anyone in the audience, any concerns over this? No opposition? Motion pass five and O for Ms. Sagans, there you go.
And I noticed Jason Schoeff in the audience today, I think Jason is still here. He's the Gulf County Representative on the Triumph Board. Wanted to mention to the board that the next Triumph Board meeting, which Jason notified me on, is coming up and, and we'll be attending that. It's August the 16th in, in Panama City at the FSU campus, it's the Holly Center. A lot will be done, that'll probably be an extended meeting because they've scheduled a workshop with that to talk about the application process and criteria and those type things. So it's going to be something that we need to be involved in as, as a smaller eastern county to make sure that we don't have the same requirements, so to speak, on the criteria as, as some of the larger counties. Fifty jobs in Guff County means, means probably more than 250 jobs in some of the other counties. So at any rate, we'll, we'll certainly represent the eastern end and the best that we can and, and we're certainly glad that Jason's on that board. We look forward to working with him for the next four years in his four-year appointment. I wanted to mention your MYIP projects. The one that you've done first was, is the beach restoration project. We're in the process of working with Treasury on the grant process to receive that money for that particular project and that project's moving forward. You also have another million dollars that was deposited into your account and recently. And one of the things that you had talked about originally was some acquisition projects, possibly beach acquisition, river acquisitions and that type thing. One of the things that we wanted to move forward on is at least one of those doing an appraisal on, on a parcel. We've done that on the Lister Landing parcel. I've spoken with Mr. Whitfield on that. And what I would like to do is at least have the board approve for the, for the staff and the attorney to meet with the, with the property owners and kind of adjust maybe the acreage of what was, what we wound up cert, appraising. And with that, we can come back to you and give you a, an overall view of what we can acquire Lister Landing for and acquire some parking area down there at Lister Landing. Now, you won't have to, it's not a commitment to, to spend those dollars yet, but it's certainly a commitment to meet with the property owners and discuss with them and see if we can't get that worked out. We'll come back to you when we do and say we either worked it out or here's the number that you can purchase that and we'll, we'll go, go get something else. But that's, that's the first acquisition project that we'll have to go through. I haven't confirmed, but we may have to go through the 45-day public comment period once we come to a conclusion of that. But it is in your MYIP, it just wasn't specific to sites. So with it being specific to sites, it may take us 45 days. Once, once, once you give us the go-ahead, it may take us 45 days to do that public comment period.
And we're talking about two landowners?
That's correct.
Two landowners, okay.
You're talking about two landowners? So I would entertain, I, I would appreciate the board to do a motion just for us, for staff to proceed with. With that project.
We got you, all right.
Chairman, I'd like to make that motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Whitfield.
Turn that over to Mr. Yeager and.
Turn that over to Mr. Yeager and staff. They can look into it, all right. I'm not going too fast. All right, no, no, we're good, we're good. Second for discussion?
Second.
One, this is just to, to get the numbers on the Lister Landing. Is this your recommendation to buy a Lister Landing or?
No, I'm, that's y'all's decision. I think-
I mean, where did this come from? Uh, I mean, I-
Well, originally, in the acquisition process, there was a number of different projects that was mentioned. One was the lower landing at Howard's Creek, one was Lister Landing, and one was trying to find something, uh, along the Cape Beach. We have not been able to do that as of yet. Uh, the, the, uh, lower landing at Howard's Creek, we're trying to work with the state because it's a hundred-and-fifteen acre parcel.
Right.
And we want them to buy the wetlands and let us, let us see if we can't, uh, obtain the uplands. And so this was the first one that was available for us to at least have an appraisal and get you a, a, an educated number for you either to proceed or for you to not proceed. And so this is, this is y'all's, this is totally y'all's decision. I don't, I, I'm not recommending any-
Okay, just for the public, we've already acquired Willis, we have Willis and-
Oh, yeah, it's already been deeded.
And staff is working on Odina. Uh, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, work with, uh, the property owner there and try to obtain Odina Landing too. But this was, uh, in your MY, uh, MYIP originally for, for land acquisitions.
Okay.
But it's not a recommendation from staff, that's strictly y'all's choice. On- once we get you the full information, that's y'all's determination.
I, I would just think we've already got Willis, y- you know, and-
Not it.
To me, the lower la-, uh, lower landing at Howard's Creek might be a better option than Lister. You know, Lister and Willis is, you know-
Right.
That's the only thing I'm looking at, so.
All right.
What's your second stand?
Yes.
Any other? Anyone in the audience?
Could I ask one question?
Yes, sir, you can.
On, on the Odina property? How, is that looking? Don't know yet, too early?
Well, here's what I think, and, and Don and Jeremy may have more, uh, information even than, than I do, they've probably had more discussion. But I think the property owner certainly, uh, has indicated their willingness to sit down and discuss Odina Landing. Uh, as you know, we've, we've, we've had that thing leased for a pretty good while. We've actually expended some funds down there a few years ago doing a float and dry dock and doing some enhance, enhancement to the ramp itself. So I think it's, it's, and Don, you may, can add anything further to that, but the, the owner of the property has, has initiated, at least said that they would be willing to sit down and discuss Odina Landing.
That, the owner is Deseret.
That's correct.
One reason I was asking, I know the, uh, stated, did away with the fire tower and the houses and all down there. And there's that piece of property pretty much adjoins that. It would be nice if we could get all of that in one lump sum. But I don't know what the state has done with theirs, so.
That's-
It'd be worth looking into. I think it reverted back to, uh, Deseret, uh, with the fire tower and all that. Yeah, it did, yep. We got Ms. Marcia back here with Senator Nelson's office, and by the way, Marcia, my apologies if I knocked-
Senator Mufford.
Anyway, Senator Mufford, I'm kinda we were at this time yesterday somewhere, I don't know. But, uh, anyway, all right.
At any rate-
Anything else?
That's, that's-
That would be great, if we could land that. I'm like Commissioner Rogers, I, O- Odina's on my, you know, radar, far as-
We're certainly, we're certainly working with that, and hopefully we can attain that without expending even pot one funds.
I know we, we talked about doing some kind of trade or something we have to down the road with Deseret, but anyway. Okay, all right, all right. Any, any other questions? Any concerns? Now, this motion is to just move forward on the Lister Landing.
That's correct.
Thing, all right. Any other, anyone in the audience, all right? Any objection to the motion? Uh, motion passed five and oh.
Well, and, and the next item-
While we're right here, let me, let me hold for it.
Yeah.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, on this Triumph Board, Gulf County, we were fortunate enough to have a young man to get appointed to that board. Jason Schoeff, any of you that you don't know him, he's right back here. Jason, if you want to stand up, everybody kinda like, get a good look at you, buddy.
There you go.
Well, yeah, here he is, he's over here, and, uh-
What's your cell number now?
Yeah, yeah, that's the first thing we want. But anyway, uh, Gulf County was fortunate to have a fine young man to sit on this board. And I, no question in my mind, he'll fight diligently for Gulf County and for all of everything coming, but so. Jason, we're looking, looking to you now. All right, Mr. Yeager, do you have anything else?
I would be remiss too if, if Marcia Mathis, you have mentioned, is, is in here from Senator Mufford's office. Marcia, we're, it's always glad to have you here. Senator Mufford was key for us when, when we were in Tallahassee for the legislative session for a number of different issues. But this issue was one that was near and dear to our heart, is to add two members to that Triumph Board uh, from the least, uh, less populated counties, so we would have representation in, in, on the rural end. And, uh, Marcia and Senator Mufford were key to makes, making sure that got in the legislation. If it hadn't been for them, we probably wouldn't have, Jason. So, we appreciate Senator Mufford's involvement in that. The only other thing I had is, uh, as I'd said before, you have some more money, uh, in your, um, um, pot one funds. You don't have to make a decision on this or anything today, or you can, whatever your choice is. Uh, I know one of the, one of the, um, projects that's been presented to us, even after we did the plan, was a project working with the school board to do a welding program, uh, in Weewahichka, uh, similar to the one that's in Port Saint Joe. And so that certainly probably falls within the realm of using pot one funds. You can't use it for administration, but you can certainly stand up that program with the equipment and the wiring and everything needed. I think they already have a building.
They do.
Uh, but that's, uh, it's, it's totally up to y'all. I wanted to put that out to y'all to make sure that you knew that they had presented that to, uh, to the, to the staff and, and to y'all, so, uh, at some point in time that you wanna research that or, or, or tell us to move forward with trying to, uh, uh, put that into pot one, we'll, we'll certainly do that.
I think it's a good time right now. I think it's a great program, huh?
Yeah.
I mean, we need to train these guys for what's coming, you know? Uh- Just, man, anything else? Is this a one-time investment?
Yes, sir, there's, that's-
I wasn't quite clear on that.
Well, that's one of the things that you can't use pot one for administration money for, uh, to stand up those programs for a continued program. So, in, in talking with Jim Norton, I haven't spoken to all the school board members yet, but I spoke to the superintendent. And I think there's a willingness there. They, they are wanting to get that program stood up, so they are certainly in support of this pro- matter of fact, they're, they're the ones that are, are pushing this program along, so they're in full support and understand that they have to administer.
Uh, one other thing, Mr. Yeager, uh, I'm a hundred percent for this. We need it throughout the county for kids to get a job.
Right.
And we're not going to have to continue doing that, so I, I'm all in on this. Only thing my question is, when the proposal was brought, there were some prices there that I think those need to go out for bid. I recall one was like ninety-four thousand dollars, and that's all right for starting a framework. But I think we need to know what these, uh, difficult five things in there are going for-
Right.
Before we do a final approval.
Yes, sir, they had an extensive list, and what the law, uh, requires you to do and what the act requires you to do, uh, is, is to, uh, go out for bids for, for certain things that are over a certain amount of money. So while those numbers are projected numbers, they certainly can change up or down on, on standing up that program. Uh, I'm glad that I'm hearing your support. I, I can, I can vouch for the program. I actually have a grandson that went through the Port Saint Joe pr- program and he's in, in the workforce now, still living here, but he's, he's, he's traveling, so you're right, Commissioner Macron. It, it certainly puts, puts them to work and still keeps them as our residents.
Absolutely, I'll make a motion, we move forward. All right, Commissioner Macron?
Second.
By Commissioner Whitfield. Oh, Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Let me, let me go more here, you've already had one. Commissioner Quinn?
Uh, well, I just wanna add, I'm, I think I got abstained, yeah, I'm abstaining. Um, I, I abstained from that vote, but I, I am, if I could vote, I would vote for it because it is good. And Mr. Tommy Knox does a fantastic job out there at the schools getting those kids ready. And, uh, I think having one on the other end would be great for this community. I abstained from that, that vote.
Thank you.
Gulf County School is my employer.
All right, got a motion?
Yes, sir.
You second it?
Yes, sir.
All right, any further, Commissioner Rogers, any questions? Chair, anyone in the audience? All right, motion passes for one abstention. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, I apologize for taking too much time today.
Oh, anytime, Mr. Yeager. All right, let's come on around, let me look out here and say, Joe?
Number two.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Whitfield?
Just giving you a quick revenue update.
All right.
Uh, we collected for June from runs, uh, ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. So that puts us up, uh, from this time last year, ninety-two thousand three dollars.
We're up?
Yeah.
Last year, yeah. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
That's good, thank you. Jenkins?
Good morning to you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Um, I had hoped that I would be standing in front of you today announcing the opening of scalping season for two thousand seventeen. Um, however, that has not happened. Um, FWC had done some testing in the waters, and there is an algae bloom that, um, affects the, um, shellfish such as clams, oysters and scallops. Um, we've, we just received a call late this weekend, and, um, we've been working with FWC. In fact, in a second, I'm gonna invite Steve Shea and Amanda Nally to come on up and, and address any questions you have. We, because of the timing, we are in an active education mode, the TDC staff, we've been down at landings all morning. We've had local news coverage. We're reaching out to as many partners as we can. This is a temporary delay in the opening of the season. There's no definitive date to open. Um, we would like to work with FWC if we can to extend it on, on the latter part of the season. However, we have people in town, um, who had planned on going scalping this morning, and we are doing everything we can to manage their expectation and, um, the, you know, the, the situation. I can't tell you what the algae is because I can't pronounce it, so I can probably, if I could, Mr. Chairman, could I have-
Sure, you can, sure.
Steve and Amanda, come on up and dress, and then I can finish up.
Steve and Amanda, give Ms. Roberts your name and who you're with, right over here, just for the record, for the men. She's our official record keeper.
So what do you need to know from me? Oh, Steve Shea, I'm the regional director with the FWC.
There we go. Amanda?
Amanda Nally, Public Information, Marine Fisheries Management, FWC.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate the opportunity to address you today, uh, though be it the unfortunate, uh, circumstances associated with the need to delay the opening of the scallop season here in Saint Joe Bay. Just to give you a brief, uh, overview of what's happened, and I'd like to leave most of the time for answering any questions you may have. We found out Friday that there was the, um, toxin associated with the pseudonitzia, uh, algae in, in the bay that, uh, was, uh, not good for people, especially in regards to consumption of shellfishes. Uh, DAX actually closed, uh, the oyster and, and clam season on Saturday. We needed to collect samples of the scallops to see if the concentrations in the scallops exceeded those thresholds. We got those, uh, results back yesterday, and they did exceed the thresholds. So we adopted an executive order postponing the opening of the season yesterday. Uh, as Jennifer stated, we don't know exactly when we'll be able to reopen the season. We want to do that as soon as possible. But we're required by law to have two, um, uh, consecutive samples of, uh, below threshold levels that have to be at least seven days apart. So we know that the closure will be at least two weeks. Um, the, this is unusual, uh, algae. Uh, it occurs in, in all waters in the state of Florida. But the only times we've had, uh, closures of shellfishes have occurred in Saint Joe Bay. Once in two thousand thirteen and once in two thousand fourteen. And because of that, we test monthly for, um, this toxin in the waters. Uh, the last two closures that occurred, they actually lasted between six and eight weeks, that was the average. So we're not sure. Uh, it could be as little as two weeks, but it could be for extended period. Uh, our agency is going to try, working with the county, to make sure that we can have the longest season possible. Uh, um, you know, at such time as the season is allowed to be back open. But I'd like to leave this opportunity to answer any questions that you may have on this issue.
Let me ask a question right now. Are you working with the Florida Department of Health here in Gulf County?
Yes, sir. We actually had a conference call yesterday that included the State, uh, Department of Health, uh, DAX, um, and, uh, DEP. Uh, I was just informed today by county staff that, uh, uh, the Department of Health, the communication, uh, you know, may not have been what they would have liked. So we have exchanged information, and they will be a part of any correspondence that we have on this issue in the future.
Please.
Yes, sir.
My, my understanding, Steve, they had no clue that y'all had closed the bay, the shellfish. Am I right, Department of Health?
When I communicated with, um, Marcia and Sarah yesterday, they had not been notified yet, it was late Monday. I, I called them locally, but I, I hadn't had the time to get to them until about five o'clock.
Right, and I, I guess, you know, the, the fatal assumption, you know, we were working with the, the State Health Department, and we assumed that they, they were corresponding with the associate, uh, county entities, uh, and, and we were communicating directly with Jennifer, uh, from a county perspective. So, uh, you know.
Let's don't assume this work, because that bay is in Gulf County. And the Florida Department of Health in Gulf County should be at the top of the list of anything of this. Is that clearly understood?
It won't happen again, that's for sure, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. And another thing is, you know, not to look at the glass half-empty, half-full, there's some, there's some good things about this. You know, the red tide is what caused the, uh, population reduction in the past in the bay. Uh, this algae, uh, it's a colorless, odorless, um, uh, toxin, uh, so it doesn't create any other health concerns, uh, in the bay. It doesn't affect fin fishes, uh, swimming is still open, so the relative health outside of consumption of shellfishes is the only thing to be concerned about at this time.
Master.
Okay, Ms. Chairman.
Hey, Steve. Chair recognizes Commissioner Macron. Uh, Ms. Shea, uh, just trying to educate myself, uh, do y'all normally check for this bacteria?
Yeah, we-
Oh, I mean, is this a, I mean, it's just unbelievable to me that three days before the season opens, we, we're closing the bay. You know, I, 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 I'm just, you know, we, we got a ton of people here that's ready to go scalping.
Right.
You know, and, and I mean, it, my phones blew up, I know Ms. Adams is, you know, taking all kind of calls, but I, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm in disbelief, you know, that we're at this point, you know, that we didn't know about this two weeks ago.
Yeah, well, we didn't know about it two weeks ago.
I mean, are, do y'all regularly check for this or?
We check, uh, monthly, and it's, the samples are usually mid-month, so we didn't find out about the sample till late Friday. Uh, contacted DAX, DAX immediately closed the, the shellfishes that they're responsible for. We didn't wanna close unless we knew for sure that, because some, there's only fifty percent of the time that you'll actually see impacts to, to scallops. So we didn't wanna close the season prematurely without knowing that there were toxic levels in the organism. And we didn't find that out till yesterday. So it was, uh, it was just the timing of when the samples, uh, occur. So we just have no idea that that was gonna happen.
All right, one other question here. How does this affect gilled fish? Does this algae bloom have any effect just to Saint Joe Bay scallop?
No, no, no impacts on fin fishes. So any of the fishermen or fishing activities and consumption of, uh, fin fishes, no problem. It's only a shellfish consumption issue.
If, what if it's been, uh, uh, you're talking about in the, in the raw stage of it? Or if it's been properly prepared to a temperature of X number of degrees, whatever it is?
All right, now this, as far as shellfishes, this toxin is not affected by temperature. So you can't cook it and dissipate it. So, uh, you know, cooking is not gonna, uh, help you in regards to the levels of the toxin. But the toxin does not occur in the flesh of fin fish. So speckled trout, red fish, other fish in the bay, it's not a problem with consumption.
One other time's the only time we've ever seen this here, Steve?
This is the third time. It happened in two thousand thirteen, documented in two thousand fourteen, and then again in seventeen.
Now, this is altogether different from red tide.
Completely different organism, yes, sir.
Does the heat contribute too?
There's several things that contribute, that, you know, you've heard about upwelling, uh, of the Gulf water, that's one, uh, we've had a lot of rain, so a lot of stormwater runoff can contribute to it. So it's probably, uh, a combination of factors. And the other thing about Saint Joe Bay, you wonder why it ha- this has happened three times in Saint Joe Bay. It's somewhat of a closed system that doesn't flush readily like a lot of the other bays in the state of Florida. And that could help contribute to the retention of the algae and then the, the concentration of the toxins.
Have you seen this anywhere else?
This is the only place in Florida that this is known to have occurred.
Master? Any? Amanda, you have any? Anything you would like to contribute to this?
These are the, the surveys?
So we're talking about, we don't, what I'm hearing, reading between lines, we're not gonna have a scallop season this year. Terrible.
Mr. Chairman, we have some of these available for the public if you'd like them out.
Mr. Chairman, on a positive note, is you, you know, we've been working directly with the county- county officials on the restoration of the scallop population.
Yes, you have.
Which has been going well. We have multiple cages in the bay right now with over 2,000 scallops that were raised in captivity. They've already spawned and producing spat, so the, this algae does not impact the scallop population. So, the restoration efforts are continued to move in a positive direction. It's just, you know, waiting to see once the toxin levels fall, so they're okay for consumption, so.
So, it doesn't, doesn't affect the scallop, just affects?
Potentially could affect people, yeah.
Right, now, let me ask you a question here. Is our scallop population healthy in St. Joe Bay? I mean, healthy, I mean, is it?
It's healthier than where we were.
Yeah, it's definitely on the comeback trail. It's not back to what we want it to be, but the population, the, the last two years since the population crash, it's continued to go up and we anticipate that it's going to continue to go up, so.
That's only good news, okay. Yes, proceeding, all right, anything else? I'm sorry to come up. Amanda, do you have anything you wanted to contribute to?
No, sir, no additions. I think he's covered.
All right, board members? Any further? It is what it is and we don't have the power, FWC has the power to open it or close it or regulate it.
Mr. Chairman, I know, though, as bad as that makes us feel, public health has to come ahead of anything else.
Absolutely, I understand that, it's just the timing and everything, yes.
It's disappointed, you know, so it's got to be done.
Truly is. All right, Mrs. Adams, do you have anything else? Just hang around a minute, Steve, just a second here.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just would like to reiterate, I've, I've been on the phone all day yesterday with Commissioner McCrone and with Don and Michael. We are getting that word out. We were waiting for the final press release.
I saw it this morning on one of the local news stations, I don't know.
And so, that was my delay in, in getting with the Health Department locally for, to the end of the day. We're, we're just trying to redirect people to different adventures on the bay. You can still go snorkeling when you scallop, you're snorkeling. You just can't, just can't get the scallop.
Just stay away from this little scallop.
And the scallops are out there. We've been working with FWC, like Steve said, last week, we went out and did the phase two of restoration and there are scallops in the bay. And I'll take direct, when I, when I'm, when I'm updated, I'll obviously work with Mr. Butler, Mr. Hammond, and Commissioner McCrone in making sure the message is.
Good deal. Steve, again, for the public, when, when will you sample again?
Well, we sampled this past week, so we'll sample again. Now, we're actually, the samples will be taken, I think, today, and so that'll start the clock again. So, we're, we'll even try to accelerate so we can capture the first non-toxic level, so then that'll accelerate when we can reopen the season. So, we'll do everything we can to sample as frequently as possible in order to be, establish the season back in place, so.
All right. Before you leave, I saw representatives with the Florida Department of Health here. Ms. Lindman, are you still with us? Lindman, yeah, do you have anything you'd like to contribute to this?
No, sir, we're communicating with local healthcare providers for any folks who might represent with symptoms that might, at least they would be screened to find out that you consented to any of these scallops.
Right. All right, thank you, Ms. Lindman. Okay, any other question?
Appreciate your time, Commissioner.
Steve, Amanda, I'm sorry for the bad news and, anyway. Said it is what it is. Thank you for coming over and have a safe trip back. Bye.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
That's good for you. Ms. Seggins? Do you have anything? All right, I see you way back there, there. Captain? Anything for the Sheriff's Department? All right, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Trailer, ah, there you go. Good morning to you, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning, come on up. I think you have a thing or two here you would like to talk to us about. Yeah, how's the beaches doing? Everything going good down on the beaches?
Beaches doing great, your parks are doing great. You're getting plenty of money, actually. You're $50,000.
Plenty of money, yeah.
Your $50,000 is going to be, hopefully, start being in use as of today. I've got the bids coming in for that.
You have, you have.
Uh, Mr. Whitfield's is, uh, your parks are tremendous as far as that. The park that's really shined out is Mr. Rogers' Park, obviously. The Beacon Hill Park turned out fantastic.
That's great. Yes, sir, what do you have for the board this morning?
But we could go on and on about that, but I'm here for something else.
Okay, well, let's hear it.
All right, I'm here to talk about somebody in this room.
Hopefully not me.
It's about Mr. Butler.
Ah, great man.
It's about Mr. Butler. We're going to talk a little bit about Mr. Butler here for, you know, each time somebody retires, we wait till the last day and the last moment to say goodbye. And that's really not right for this man right here. 28 years of service he's given the county, and I'm talking about loyal service. And when you talk about the services he's given us, I'm talking about six, seven days a week. I've called him on Sunday nights at 10 o'clock. I don't know how Ms. Brenda put up with me doing that and so forth back there, but I see his family back there and he's got to appreciate the fact that they put up with him all those years for those times. Mr. Butler is an exceptional person, very exceptional. You men here have found that out right quickly, I can assure you. Each one of you who have come on here, the first thing you do is you're a little bit confused and don't know which way to go. The first person you call upon is Mr. Butler and he gives you all the time in the world to sit down with you and say, this is what we have, this is your options. And all my years here, he never told me how to vote. He never expressed how to vote. He said, Billy, this is what we've got here, it's your decision. But it's more about the fact that he's been loyal to this county. And I'm talking about loyal from the standpoint, he stood by this county in the bad times and he's been here in the good times as well. But today, let's think about one thing here. We've got all these pictures up on the wall of county commissioners. That's all fine and great. That's all good. But before I leave from this podium today, I want this board to commit to something, that we honor this person. This person right here needs to be honored. He needs to be thanked and thanked properly. Now, when I leave here, I'm asking you to do one thing, consideration. Now, Mr. Jaeger, you hiding back there, come on. I know you're hiding back there. I didn't think this of long. This is something Warren and I driving down the road and so forth and Michael's name's in there too, so Mike, you don't hide away as well.
Don't blame me. You're down.
Yeah. But you, if you, I've been around him 28 years. Even when I was gone, I'd come home and I'd give him a call. I'd call him from Montana, New York, say, Don, how you doing? And I know Don didn't have the time to talk to me, but I guarantee you, he talked to me. I'd come down here and go to lunch with him and so forth. And today, I'm working for him and he actually gets on me from time to time as well as that. But the fact is, is what we do here today, when he leaves here in eight months, Mr. Hammond's going to take his place. And Mr. Hammond, that should be an honor for you, and I, I assure you. Mr. Butler, you've done more for me than any man I can ever think of. If I was out in the middle of the ocean and I needed a life jacket, I'd ask you to throw me one. Would you throw me one, Don? I know you would. But the, my consideration, and I know Warren's fixing talk here and so forth like that, is there needs to be done more for him and, than just a cake. There needs to be more than just a thank you. And my position is that he deserves a portrait, he deserves a resolution, he deserves whatever we, you board members want to give him. And that's, that's my say-so. And I want to thank you for 28 years, Don, personally, as a friend and former county commissioner. Go ahead, Mr. Jaeger.
I just wanted to briefly say that I came on in 1992 as a, as a young man that didn't know a whole lot. And certainly, one of the people that, that I involved myself with was Don. I've never felt that a guy would give me so many honest answers, even when he disagreed with me. He would disagree with me in a way that he made me feel good about it. I thought I had all the answers, I didn't. Don has shown integrity in, in this position. That's why he's the longest-tenured county commissioner in the state of Florida. Is, is, he's been honest and open and he's truly been a public service. When we, when we talk about the, the amount of hours that he put in, Billy briefly mentioned it, I just want to say, I don't know of any, any week that he doesn't put in many more than the 40 hours a week that, that we assign him to. He certainly, I know that all y'all know, he's available to you every time you call. He, he picks up that phone and he's certainly an asset to keep this county moving forward. And Billy and I had talked and, and, and Michael and, and Jeremy and all of us wanted to make sure that we recognize the amount of service that this man's been to the people, not only to this board, but to, to the people of Gulf County. So, I think we, we may have something that Jeremy wants to read and that Michael wants to show, but we, we certainly appreciate the service that Don Butler's been to this community.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, to follow up on Billy and Warren's comments, I'd like to offer to read this resolution for your consideration today. It reads as follows, "It's a resolution of Gulf County Board of County Commission, State of Florida, supporting the official naming of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners' Boardroom as the Donald H. Butler County Commission Chamber and for its display in the prominent locations at the Gulf County Commission Administration Building and upon entering the commission chamber. It's whereas in recognition of Chief Administrator Don H. Butler's 28 years of loyal dedication to Gulf County and its citizens, and whereas having the unparalleled and unique distinction as the longest continuous-serving county administrator in the state of Florida, and whereas having the sole designation and title and honor of serving as the only quote "chief administrator" in the state of Florida, and whereas since taking his first position with Gulf County, has faithfully, successfully, and dutifully served under 23 different elected county commissioners, during which time also encompassed four Florida gubernatorial administrations and in fact, five United States presidential administrations. And whereas under Chief Administrator Butler's administration and leadership, several hundred employees have served this community for the betterment of its citizens and future generations. And whereas it has been Chief Administrator Butler's stewardship, oversight, and steady hand during his tenure that has navigated and brought Gulf County through some of its most challenging decades, including the transformative periods in its history from an industrial mill community through economic recession, man-made as well as natural disasters, to now redefining itself as an emerging, diverse, and burgeoning regional economy with an abundance of ongoing infrastructure projects, economic development, and environmental restoration, all the while enhancing the quality life here in Gulf County for its residents and visitors alike. Whereas now, as Chief Administrator Butler prepares for a much deserved retirement and in recognition for his almost three decades of dedication, stability, and leadership that has brought Gulf County to new horizons for future generations of Gulf County, now therefore be it resolved, the County Commission of Gulf County does hereby resolve and declare as follows. From this day forward, the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners Boardroom shall be named the Donald H. Butler County Commission Chamber in honor of his three decades of selfless and tireless dedication to Gulf County, and so that all that walk through these doors will see the name of Donald H. Butler and recognize the immense gratitude and respect this special community has for his lifetime of work, the sacrifice of both he and Ms. Brenda, and the, his incomparable efforts for the betterment of Gulf County for its future generations. Offered for your unanimous acceptance, approval, and adoption today, July 25th of 2007, is prepared for each one of your commissioners' signatures, and I offer that to the commission and chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harney.
Mr. Chairman, I think that sums it up right there. What kind of man he is. He, everything that was said in there, he deserves it, and I think we all know that. You guys have known him for years and years, but you really got to know him now. And I guarantee you, if we see him 10 years from now or the next day or next day, he's going to be the same person. Don Butler, Don Butler is a fine person, fine man. I don't know, there's nothing I can say about him other than the fact that he deserves everything that you can give him today, and I would appreciate your consideration.
All right, gentlemen, you heard the resolution. Do we need a motion here for this?
No move.
We do, we got it right over here by Commissioner.
Second.
McCrone, second by Commissioner Whitfield. You have a board discussion?
Yes, sir, I just want to add.
Let's recognize Commissioner Quinn here.
For my, my, my three so years that I'm going on, like Mr., Mr. Trailer said, Mr. Butler has been, he, he, he's straight honest and never tried to tell you which way to vote. He always laid it out there until, and then you, you had to pick and choose. So, I appreciate all the knowledge that Mr. Butler has. I, I feel good to call him a friend of mine from the years that I haven't got a chance to know him. I graduated with his daughter, know Ms. Brenda, and he's a, he's a great guy. And, and I learned that if, before I ran, I found out that, you know, people tell you a lot of things about a lot of people, and once you get inside, you find out everything they said, it's not true. And I found that out, that everything that was told about everybody on the county staff or whatever, none of that was true. Once I got in and started working with these people, you find out these people love where they're from, they love their community. And Mr. Butler, I appreciate your service for, for Gulf County. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Anyone other?
I could, Mr., I'll let Mr. Rogers go ahead.
Come on, Commissioner Rogers.
Uh, I was sitting in the audits when they hired him. I've been knowing him that long, working with the county, and what you said about the hours when he first started, I know Brenda thought she was a widow for golf. It didn't matter. 16 hours, if that's what it took, that's what he was here. And that was a lot of days and it's a privilege to know, work with.
Thank you. Is that it, Commissioner? Commissioner McCrone?
As dedicated a man as I've ever seen. I don't remember one time that I hadn't picked up the phone to call Don, he hadn't picked it up. And, uh, Don, a good friend to Jerry, you know what I'm talking about. You know, well deserved, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Butler, I was trying to think of something good to say about you on the way down here. Unfortunately, I didn't make the grade, but having said that and being a young commissioner, you have been great. I'm pleased to not just call you administrator, but to call you my friend. I don't use those words lightly and I don't use it on many people, but you have been a friend to me during the time I've been here. I hope I've been respectful and, and return that, so you deserve everything you get. I hate to see you go when the field is lost, even though we know Mr. Hammond's is capable and, and, and coming forth. The unusual trait that I found with Mr. Butler, I didn't know why I needed to bring honey or vinegar down here when I come. Because I didn't know what I was faced with. But I found out right away that I was dealing with a man that was straight down the line. He didn't try to, but there's something else even deeper, it's hard to put into words, but I would go in there and talk to Don about something that he may have seemed a little different than me, and we would listen and talk, and I would get halfway back to Wee Wall and he'd say, you know, I done what he wanted. He changed my mind without me knowing it, so I, I, I'm totally proud of you, Mr. Butler, how you've studied all these years, I, it's beyond me. You're a very tough man and a good man, and I wish you well many more years. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just say one more thing.
Sure.
And I don't know if Don remembers this, but I was a young man trying to get started in business 20-something years ago, and you helped me get my license, get set up. I don't know if you remember that, but everything comes full circle, so, thank you, Don.
Yeah. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to tell this short story, true story.
And I'll tell one, and we'll.
Yeah, we will.
All right.
Many years ago, a county commissioner got elected. First thing he did was he called me and says, I want to get rid of Mr. Butler. We got to get rid of that man. I ran on the premises, we're going to get rid of this, this, uh, this guy. He's running the county. We got to get rid of him. I said, well, do you know his duties? Do you know what he does? Not really, but we got to get rid of him. And I said, well, I'll tell you what you do. You go down there and you sit down with him for a month. You learn about what's going on in this county and talk to him. And if you want to get rid of him in a month, hey, man, I'll second the motion. That's just what I told him. Two weeks later, that county commissioner called me back and he says, hell, we can't do without him. You know who I'm talking about?
That's true.
That's right.
Thank you, Bill. In closing, I'm the senior member on the board and I'm still wet behind the ears, but the night I got elected, my phone went to ringing and following right along the lines and I'm sure these others. But first thing I learned right off the bat, shove all that in the garbage can. Mr. Butler, he used, by the way, he used to work for me on time. Now then, I tell him, no, Don, you don't work, I don't, you don't work for me now, I work for you. You the administrator. But anyway, Don sat down and he said, he never questioned a vote of mine. He said, you were elected by the people to do the voting. You voted. You voted. I'll never tell you, you voted wrong, or you ought to vote it this way, and that's, it's 10 after, 12 after 10, and that still stands good today from seven years ago. But Mr. Butler and the staff, that's my advisory staff. I had a lot of these, you know, I call them these wannabes or whatever, but I just shoved them all in, we call it the garbage can, because what they were promoting was nothing but garbage. But this man, I've never been to where I couldn't call him, he was always truthful. I never had to go back and say, now wait a minute, I want to question this, but never have. He's always been right down the line, and that, that means a lot. When you know someone that you can call him any hours, I call down here a lot of times, he comes out here, people, we, we, we work 10 hours a day, four days a week, and somebody says, well, you're due, well, it helps our employees if they have to do something on a Saturday, a doctor's appointment, or this, and it saves on expenses. Called out here at 6 o'clock on a Friday morning, he'll ask why? Because he spent the first four days talking with me, burning up his time, and Commissioner Whitfield, all of us and everybody else, so he has to come out here on his off days to try to get some of his work caught up. That's pure fact, but he never asked for one penny of compensation or anything for that. But anyway, Don, thank you, buddy. Thank you for everything you do for us. Thank you so much. Mr. Hammond?
Before you carry the motion, uh, Ms. Brenda and Kim are here, so if you get them to come up, and, and we have a, a proposed plaque that, uh, that is, that is not the final version. I think Willie, Lynn, and Carrie have been working on it while we've been out of town, but uh, I just want to say two quick things. I've been able to-
Brenda, come on up, please.
For Don for 25 years.
Sure. Come on. Oh, okay. Is Ms. Brenda there?
Uh, he's been a much better boss to me than I was to him. Some of us have had, been able to work on both sides, and the only thing he hasn't taught me, he's taught me unbelievable work ethic, patience. So he's got a few more months to teach me some patience, but other than that, uh-
Few more, did you say months?
Few more months. Few more months.
Good morning, Brenda. Good morning. Morning, Kim.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, sir, Mr. Butler.
Don't really know what you guys did, because these two ladies cannot hold a secret. So y'all, y'all done good on that. Unbelievable, it has, and it's all been good. Unbelievable number of phone calls that Brenda has filled it over the years, and all, all day long, and that's part of it. If you don't enjoy it, you don't need to be here. I enjoyed it. Appreciate, I, I do have, I do find it hard to, to accept praise, I always have, and I appreciate you guys, your praise. It's, it's a hard thing for me to take. I'd a lot rather hand it out than, than to take it, but uh, I do appreciate what, what you said and what, what you, you're doing. But uh, two, I think my, my key to making it through and, um, let me back up a little bit. Mr. Taylor, he made the most to hire me a long time ago. It was a cold rainy night in December 1989, when the interviews went through, and then in January, the board decided to go ahead and hire, and I always appreciate that. I found myself 48 years ago working for Mr. McDaniel, and um, and something that we have lost in Gulf County, I hope we can get it back one day. The plant where he worked gave me an opportunity, gave me an opportunity to work part-time and go to school part-time, and for a plant to let me work all I possibly could. I made, I made as much money as grown men made, and made four semesters over Gulf Coast. And I always, and I've, I've said that thousands of times to a lot of people, we don't have those plants today, and if we ever get that type thing back in Gulf County, I hope that can happen again. The paper mill used to do it. Arizona did it. Uh, it was based in Indonesia back then, when I'd been premier, and that was for a guy that had no money, to make some guys money and to go to school on, you know? And, and I always appreciate that, but yeah, I'm a worker, worked 48 years ago now, I'm working for him again, you know? But I always appreciate what you guys have done. The biggest thing I would say for, and, and, and Michael knows it, Michael is, he's the best guy in the world you could have to do in a job that I'm doing, but the best thing he can do, and the best thing I did, is surround yourself with people that, that know what they're doing, and we have some very good people, we have, you have a very good staff. I can walk out here today, and you'll never miss a beat, and, and we, we all, instead of, in these county commission meetings, all staff has a share of what's going on. Not that I don't know what's going on, or Michael doesn't know what's going on, or we, we know what, but everybody's got a part, and somebody can be out of town for a day or two, and you won't miss a beat. And we, you have hired some good people, we've hired some good people, and we have retained some good people over the years, and your workforce is pretty stable. It's, it's been a while. Part, part of my joke is, I got here in my 30s, and I'm in my 60s, you know? And uh, I got here a few days before my 39th birthday, so um, it's, time does fly. I do appreciate Gulf County, Gulf County's been good to me, uh, been good to Brenda and my family, and, and uh, and uh, Brenda, we've been through, um, four, five years ago, she got, she got hit with a, she got hit with a stroke, and when she had a stroke, we all have a stroke, you know? You know, but Kim has done a fine job. She has, she has taken care of mama. We, if not a day goes by that she doesn't deal, work with her, go town with her, go Pamo City with her, you know? But we do good on that. I thank you for all you've done, you know? And just like the last day of March, will be my last day, but I plan on working wide open till then.
Thank you, sir. Keep the phone on, Don. Mr. Attorney.
That's not it. That's just a rough copy.
I'm not saying I deserve that, but I, I do appreciate that it's as bad as good as you can do. I appreciate it.
Sure. Motion on the floor. I hear any second. Did you make a motion on it? You made the motion, you made the second. Any other board? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? No. Motion, S. 5 and 0. Billy. Thank you, Billy. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Don, bless your heart. Okay. Attorney getting back. Kind of skipped over a little bit. Ms. Rhonda, do you have anything for us this morning? Okay. Madam Clerk.
I don't have anything official, but I would just like to turn that on first, since I'm constantly popping y'all's hands about not turning it on. I would just like to say, um, I didn't know this was coming, but I, um, wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate, my office appreciates Mr. Butler and his staff. We butted heads a time or two, but um, it's always been a pleasure for us to work with you, and we appreciate your commitment to the county and for working with us as well.
Ms. Roberts.
Ladies and gentlemen, that completes the county staff business. I know we've come along here, but maybe we can move along a little faster here. Now, this time, we will drop down and go into board business.
All right, let's, let's recognize Commissioner Quinn.
Yeah, I can go first, that's fine. Uh, I just got a quick question. What, what is bid? When that's coming up?
We're going to fill it in, is she?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I didn't jump, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
It's just for us to fill in. All right, sir?
Yes, sir, I can go first. It's hard to follow that show, so let me switch, switch gears real quick. I just want to, quick congratulations to the, uh, to the PSJ All-Stars AA Pitching Machine Kids. They traveled down to Sebring, Florida, coached by Mark Costin, along with Shanique Williams, Harold Williams, Harold, Harold Williams, and also Ben Ashcraft. And they went down to the, uh, Sebring Pitching Machines Tournament, and they finished second in the state. So they did pretty good, so I just want to make sure I give them a good congratulation from the Board of County Commission. Want to make sure I recognize those kids. Uh, they did a fantastic job. The other thing also, I want to thank the city of Port St. Joe, along with its workers, Mr. Jim Anderson and Mr. John Grantley, getting that staff, and people that work with us concerning the annual Fourth of July street dance celebration. It was a success. I thank Jen and, and the TDC for all they do to help us put on that event. It was a success, and uh, everybody that came through had a good time. So I appreciate y'all, your support, and um, and I thank the city for helping us out. Uh, on another note, uh, we all got an email, I don't know if y'all saw the email from Ms. Brockman from the, uh, Public Library, and um, she has an opportunity to bring a Smithsonian traveling, traveling exhibit to Port St. Joe in 2018. She's, uh, she said the exhibit is titled Hometown Teens and focuses on the importance of sports in a small, in a small community, a small town. What she said, the grant process includes is a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners, so I would like to make a motion that we submit that letter of support for that grant project. So I'll put that in a form of a motion that we support, um, Mrs. Brockman in the Gulf County Library.
For the Smithsonian?
For the Smithsonian, Smithsonian, uh, traveling exhibit.
Good idea. All right, sir.
I'll second.
Got a motion? Got a second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further board discussion? One? Opposition motion passed 5 and 0.
Uh, one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
The 10th Street Subcommittee has been meeting once a month to, to kind of, kind of see this vision that we have come to pass for our, for our community, and our next meeting is actually scheduled for Thursday, August the 10th at 9:00. We only do it for one hour, uh, so if you're not doing anything, you want to put some input into the, uh, 10th Street Subcommittee, you want to add something, we, we, we ask that you come, we will have that meeting in the, uh, EOC, EOC building, uh, on August 10th at 9:00. Along with that, I need to get the board, um, support here to utilize that fifth cent. We froze it, I need to utilize, see if we can get to utilize some of that fund for staff to move forward, hiring a consultant slash planner to kind of help guide us through the rest of this process. So I need to put that in a form of a motion, allow us to use some of that frozen money of the fifth cent to, uh, get us a planner slash consultant in here. I make that motion.
All right, sir.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Quinn? Second by Commissioner Macron. All right, we open for the discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with that. I, I'd rather, if we could, do we have an amount? I, I always hate to vote on something that's open-ended, you know, it says some or whatever's needed, do we have an amount we could owe? Or a guideline, and we just can go and see what it turns out?
I, I'd say, well, I add that to my motion, let's, let's say, if we, if that motion passes, just add that before we make the decision to, uh, hire that person, it comes back before, no, I don't, I don't know if I want to bring it back before the board, because that might be, that might look, slow us down a little bit.
Commissioner, if I just recommend, keep it under the bid threshold. The Administrator and the TDC have the authority. The budgeted funds are there, they've been frozen, but it's under the bid threshold not to exceed, and that way gives the administrative staff and the TDC the ability to go out and hire a consultant to participate in your upcoming meetings.
That's all I needed.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Any, any other board, Commissioner Rogers? Anyone in the audience? Got a motion? Got a second? Opposition? Motion passed 5 and 0.
I sit, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rogers?
I don't have anything.
All right, sir. Commissioner Whitfield?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, you have the floor.
Uh, just want to get, uh, Jeremy to get with Mr. Collins on Painted Pony Road. Where we're at on, I don't know if we've ever got an agreement signed on that road and what it entails and what our obligations are, and, you know, cut through the road in case Indian Pass, we could do that. Uh, the other thing I've got, I hate to bring it up after that with Don, but uh, let's talk about waste pro a little bit.
Okay.
Lot of complaints. Got an email from a lady the other day, she's been paying for a can for two months. A week ago, they assured me she'd have a can. Friday came and went, she still don't have a can. Me and Don got out and rode the other day, followed the truck around. They're putting more on the road than they're keeping in the truck. I, I just, it's unbelievable. Uh, we, we've met with them, we've talked to them, uh, I don't know what our recourse at this, this point is. What do you, I'll see what the rest of the board thinks, huh? You know?
Mr. Attorney. We're not leaving you.
No, no.
We have-
Yes, sir.
I write on this. We have in the contract, we have stipulations for fines and different things in there.
Yes, sir. To answer the Commissioner's questions, um, two years ago, we brought them on a notice under the contract, we brought it to their attention. Um, we had a meeting with them last week with their vice president who came over, we addressed our complaints and our concerns, um, and the Commissioner as well as the administrative staff laid them out for them. Um, they've since responded as to how they're addressing the, the, uh, leaking from the trucks, um, and they also talked on some of the other things. The next step under the contract would send them a notice. The contract has liquidated damages where each incident of a can turned over that's gone through the administrative staff, leaking trucks that have hydraulic or, uh, waste being left on the roads. Going down the list, the contract specifies everything the county can do, so the next step would be to notify them in writing of these violations, um, that the county would then find them for under the contract.
All right, let me, let me say, I had this now. The city of, of Port St. Joe has a contract, and uh, it, the city, if, it's nothing that we're talking about with the county, but the city, they're contracted with the city, and so the city fathers of Port St. Joe, and they're also contracted with Wee Wa Hitchcock, they can step in, uh, if they're having complaints, and I'm sure we are, we're having them up on the north end also, people. But come back over here, Commissioner Macron, you still have the floor, sir.
And I hate to bring up this negative, but it's got to be addressed, because, uh, I tell you, uh, we've met and talked, and I don't know where we go. I, I just, you know, and I feel like we're getting lip service and nothing else, and I, I say we move forward and send them, you know? Please do, do some threatening here, I hate to say that, lack of a better word, but, you know?
Was that brought to their attention in this meeting? I, I didn't attend the meeting.
Uh, ye- yes, sir. We, we addressed with Mr. Mills specifically, the language in the contract gives the county the ability to do those fines. So we verbally notified them, the next step would be in writing, um, and then start implementing those fines.
That's in the county?
Yes.
It's in the county, okay.
Do we need a motion for that, Mr. Chairman?
We'll entertain one, we sure do.
I don't know that we need it. Do we need a motion for that?
Do you need to do a letter, Mr. Chairman?
The contract's in place, um, but I would feel secure in a motion from the board to move forward, uh, as, as that formal notice under it. It's not a breach of the contract, there's provisions, um, and we'll notify them of those violations, um, and then we'll come back and report to you next month. It also goes to the quantity of these violations, so through the administrative staff will now keep track of the complaints that come into the county. Um, we stressed for them last week that they are supposed to be fielding these complaints, not the Commissioners- Um, we stressed for them last week that they are supposed to be fielding these complaints, not the commissioners getting calls from their constituents, but that's the normal course, so the constituent will call you, complain to a commissioner, and then it will go to the vendor. The calls are supposed to go to the vendor, and and we've stressed that that is the way it's supposed to flow, um, and 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 now we're two and a half years into the contract, so they're well aware of the the proper process.
All right, now we got a motion by Commissioner Whitfield.
Yes.
I'll get you just a minute, I have a second for.
I'll second that.
All right, second by Commissioner Macron. Any other board discussion?
I'd just like to to ask, when when was when was that meeting?
Last.
Last?
Monday? I I I I didn't attend it. Wednesday.
I just wanna add, I know one time we had the, we had that issue and uh we discussed that probably about a year or two ago when we had the leaking trucks, and I I I hadn't had that problem since, but uh I think we, like I say, we probably need to uh add a little fire behind it, and hopefully they'll go ahead on and take care of whatever the issue is, cause if not, you're gonna steadily get phone calls.
Well, all right, before we vote, Mr. Hammond, we're in discussion, did you have something?
I I was in that meeting, they they have a quality control issue, they're missing two, they're missing whole routes, they're missing whole streets, they've got leaking trucks, they've got all these issues. We had a very good meeting, but until they get somebody on the ground like Mr. Hammond used to do, or um Rick Payne, who was great about solving these individual, cause people call, either they can't get through, or they don't, they get lied to from from corporate office or or whatnot, for for lack of a better word. We, I think uh he's a good guy, uh, he answered all our questions, but we've got to have somebody that's a Guff County person where people can call with complaints, uh whether county staff or the individual customers, so uh tha- that's where we need to go, and the direction is, they need to either start cleaning up their act or or follow the contract, and the contract's got pretty good teeth in it.
Well, my understanding was that when we opened, they took over the transfer station, cause I negotiated with them, that they would have someone right out here, a person that knew, I would call over to Panama City Beegee, and I don't think, I talked to the same little lady twice. You know, they had a new e- new employee, so not our place to clean up their act. They need to clean up their act, if not, we're getting their pockets. And then they're cleaning it up. All right, sir. All right.
Let's say one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Sure you can.
Uh, let me just add this to it, cause I I can remember last time when we discussed this, and it got put in, it was in the paper, and the first thing I get a call from is that we attacking the workers, and let me just be clear, we're not attacking the people that work for Waste Pro. We are, we we actually going after the the head, the higher-ups guys, cause they in charge of getting the trucks fixed, not the people that are driving the trucks. So I just wanna make sure we be clear that we're not attacking the local workers, we appreciate what they do, they only doing what they're supposed to do. Uh, but uh we we wanna go after the people that's in in corporate office who make those decisions to to pay to get those trucks fixed or to purchase those trucks.
Good, that's good, Commissioner.
And just to the Commissioner's point, we actually emphasized that with the gentleman last week and told him that the county is not complaining about the actual workers, they're actually complaining about, as Mr. Hammond said, it's a supervisor issue right now.
The workers are doing what they have. Uh, good job, sir.
All right, any other board members? Is there anyone in the audience, any on this Waste Pro with their uh shortcomings? Not, this is just a follow-up with them, any opposition? If not, motion passed five and oh. Right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir, and at this, at this time.
I still get a turn, Mr.?
Do what?
I get my turn?
Well, I feel generous today, so.
Yeah, you, no, you, I I didn't know we were into the board business.
Yeah, oh, yeah, all right, all right, I didn't thank you, I thought you could. All right, come on, come on, come on.
One, I I I feel that I need to make a statement on the Lister's Landing and on what's going on up there. Uh, before I was here, somebody chose to pave that road in there. Now, I don't know if it's a half a million dollars or whatever, but I put up with a lot of comments about road to nowhere. Road to nowhere, when there's people living on roads that need paved, and I agree with that. But since we've got it, I think it would be a big mistake for that land in the clothes. I think it will be an asset to this county and to the people, and I think it will bring money, and and up on the north end, you gotta remember, about all we've got is the fish camps and the landings and the parks, you know, we we're not fortunate enough to have, you know, the Cape or the or the deep water port or anything, it's very few things that we can do with what we're working with now, so I I just want everybody to give thought to that when, before we come back and making decisions on that. The only other thing, I would like to ask for a limited maintenance agreement uh on the end of, I think all the staff knows where it's at, right when you go to the end of the Doc Whitfield Road, you leave there to go to the lower landing, and it's not a big job, it could have been done the other day, and it was down there an hour or two, but we gotta go through the routine. Paperwork is longer than it takes to do the work, and the reason being, we've had a lot of ambulances down there, we've had dead people brought out at that landing, we've had people that was in critical condition. It seems to me it's the first place they can get the civilization from coming from that area of the river, and I certainly don't know it, but, and there's an elderly lady lives there, and it's such a small job, and it does serve a community purpose, and and uh the more of those kind of things we can do without just getting in and doing all the private enterprises work, but there's so many things we can do like that, it it's gonna, it's gonna speak well to all of us that we care about our people and uh help them solve the problem, so I would ask for unanimous consent on a LMA for that. I believe that's the right, limited maintenance agreement, for that, for probably two hours' work, huh? And uh, Mr. Attorney knows the parties involved, so he could uh, he could handle the legwork on that, and I'd appreciate it if you guys would all consider that. And uh, that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Causton, you deal with that on this limited maintenance, uh, why don't you maybe work with Attorney, you do the legwork on this and bring it back at our next board meeting. Can you do that? All right, thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, may I make one comment on Lister's Landing Road? This board of county commissioners, and I happen to have sat on the board, and I think maybe the only one on the board, I don't know, Commissioner, it might be there. County went out to cut down on our motor grating to cut expenses and to pave roads, and this was one that was on the list. But the minute it was paved, uh, like I said again, you gotta be careful. Nowhere, and I wanna stress this, nowhere in that paving of that road did it said we had to buy land. We don't have to do anything, you know, we don't have to do anything down there. We did what we said we would do, we were gonna pave some road to cut down on motor grating, that's all we did. And then next day, oh, they're gonna spend a million dollars, no we not, no we not. I just want that clear, nowhere. We, the decision way it was made to pave that road, and the former commissioners, the one that was wishing it, we agree purchasing any property, period. All right. That's board business?
That's all.
All right, let's move along. Now, Michael, I think you've already addressed seven and eight, am I correct there? We're gonna get, now, let's drop up here, so we got seven, eight. Uh, at this time, I'm going to call uh Mr. Dombrowski. Sir, I appreciate your patience. Here, we've uh had a lot going on this morning.
Thank you.
She's already had, just for the record, and the people that's watching uh this meeting, give her your name and.
Yes, um, Michael Dombrowski with M R D Associates of Destin. Um, good morning, uh, Commissioner Daniels and and Commissioners. Uh, the purpose of uh my meeting this morning is to uh provide you with a briefing of the beach restoration project that's going on 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 St. Joe Peninsula. And in particular, what I'd like to discuss is just briefly is about the prop- project limits, the design, where we are with the permits, uh, funding and in the schedule.
There you go. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. First of all, the project limits is, unlike the project that we had completed in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, that's a shortened version. And this one is gonna be starting at the southern end at the stump hole and going north into the St. Joe Peninsula State Park, just south of that, excluding Billy Joel Ridge Park, and so it's a total of five point two miles versus the seven point nine mile project that we had completed back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
Five point two.
Five point two, and this is addressing the erosion along the developed shoreline, so where there are private residences in county lands, not going into state lands at all. The design, what we have looked at in terms of the availability of funding, where the sand source is, that we looked at having an equal benefit across the entire project for all of the landowners. And we had looked at the erosion rates, we had looked at the beach widths, we'd looked at uh how the vulnerability of those structures during different level of storm events. Now, one of the things that the southern end of the project, just north of stump hole, between stump hole and really the the Marathon Station, is one of the highest eroding shorelines in the state of Florida for a developed shoreline. So what we ended off doing is, and it goes back to our original design back that we looked at in two thousand five and had been monitoring the project over that period of time, is that sand, roughly about seventy-five percent of it that is eroded from that southern end, actually goes north towards the state park, and if you know at St. Joe Spit into the entrance into St. Joe uh Bay, that spit's been growing over the years, well, that's the sand that we placed back in two thousand seven, two thousand uh eight. So the southern portion of the project's going to be a little bit wider, it's gonna have a little bit more sand, but we're still restoring the rest of the developed shoreline to give equal protection to all the landowners. And right now, we have an estimate of roughly about one point five million cubic yards that we believe that based on the funding sources that we have, we would be able to uh place along that shoreline. In terms of the the permits, we had originally put in a permit application in early two thousand sixteen. We have obtained the DEP permit that was done in, uh, we obtained that in November of two thousand sixteen. The delays were really with the federal government, with the U S Fish and Wildlife was the the biological opinion, which we have just uh had the final issued in uh June of this last, uh, just two months ago. We have been talking and working with U S, or I'm sorry, with the Army Corps of Engineers uh since the beginning, ever since we met with them originally back in two thousand fifteen. And in our conversation last week, they are, they're asking more questions, they're getting more clarification, so it's very obvious that they are working on the issuance of the permit. Now, they wouldn't promise it to me, but they did say that they are trying to get it out by the end of July, so I would expect within the next two weeks, and matter of fact, I'm gonna go visit them on my way home this afternoon, uh, to see where they're at. One of the things, once we have that permit, we'll have all the authorizations that we do need to proceed with this. Uh, in terms of funding, not to discuss the local shares, but and and we have not seen a letter from DEP, and I have been coordinating with them, but DEP through the Erosion Control Program Funds, which we're gonna be getting thirty-six percent of the cost of this program, that is correct, through DEP, that we were approved for up to four point nine five million dollars in matching funds. Their percentage is roughly uh thirty-five and a half percent of the total cost of the project will be DEP through those erosion control program funds that was approved by the legislature this last year. And those monies, yes, sir.
Hold up just a minute, this this is very important, very important, I need a motion to uh extend this time, thank you, Commissioner. Second, all, all right, now, just policy. All right, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sir. It's so that we do have those monies that are available, and the the next thing that we would be doing, meaning the county and DEP, is entering into a contract in order to be able to start pulling those funds. Now, that is a reimbursement program, so basically the county, when we get the bids in and the contractor starts submitting the invoices, the county pays those, and then turns around and asks for a reimbursement from DEP. And all the projects that we've been involved in that did include DEP funding, they've been very quick on getting those turned around, usually in a matter of two weeks, once that paperwork is submitted, so that there is a constant flow of money between the state and the county to try to reimburse your and restore your coffers on that. In terms of the uh the schedule, we have developed the bid and contract documents. Uh, the county staff, uh, Mr. Butler and and all have reviewed those, you're also, your consultant uh for the Restore Act has also reviewed those. Those have been submitted to U S Treasury for their review, because the project was federalized by using some of the Restore Act and 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 those funds, so that they are required to review those to make sure that they meet all the requirements that they have. Now, we hope to be able to advertise for bid within the next few weeks. As soon as that the U S Treasury approves those documents, we are ready to go out to bid with those. And we can still do it, e- even though that we do not have the core permit in hand, is that we can go out, cause it it's very important to get the project out on the street, so contractors do know that it is coming in. Although we have been talking with the contractors, there's only probably five or six in the country that can actually do this project. Most likely, there's probably gonna be about three that bid on it. We have been, they are aware of it, we've been discussing the project, we sent them whatever public information was available, like the permit drawings and so forth, to get them familiar with the project, so that they can start thinking about how they're going to construct this. The, uh, and actually, it it is a good time to be uh advertising for bid on this, because uh there hasn't been a lot of projects just yet. So a lot of the sandy work that has been done over the last few years, they're kind of in a lull with that. So I think that, just based on the availability of dredges, that we will be in a good position to receive competitive bids. In terms of what those bids are at this point in time, uh, I can't tell you. Uh, the one thing that we do have going for you, as a matter of fact, I was just looking at the price of number two uh diesel fuel, and it was roughly at about two dollars a a gallon. When we had constructed the two thousand eight, two thousand nine project, we were up to almost three ninety, almost four dollars a gallon, so fuel prices in half, which makes a big impact, cause we're gonna be using roughly between four to five hundred thousand gallons of fuel. So that's a substantial amount of savings just over what it was ten years ago. Uh, probably about the only thing that has gone down over the years. But um, so we are ready to go to bid with this. Uh, in terms of our general schedule, we uh looking at uh going out to bid, hopefully within the next two weeks, receiving bids by the end of of August, which then would take roughly about thirty days to get under contract, so we would hope sometime, and this is a plus or minus, you know, one month depending upon um the the final core permit, and and let me back up one one step, is that we can go out to bid, we can set a bid date, but if for some reason the core permit does not come in, we could always delay that, but at least that gets them all, you know, looking at cost and looking at the the process that they would take. Um, so given that in with the requirements that we have with sea turtle nesting, with bird uh monitoring requirements, and by the time that a contractor can get out on site, because of all the mobilization, yes, sir?
No, go ahead, I'm just trying to.
Um, is to be able to look at con- starting construction, maybe in November to December, and giving them a hundred and eighty days to construct, which is more than fair. It gets them at a rate that we need to uh restore the beaches, we're not waiting until next summer, that it puts an onus on them to be productive within their placement of sand, but it also gives them some flexibility, just in case they do have a dredge that can do the project that may already be committed for another project. And what we're doing, and in our conversations with the dredging firms, is within reason, is incorporating flexibility within the contract in order to get the best price that we can, but still get it done in in a reasonable time, so that hopefully that we will be done by uh March at the very latest by April, which keeps us out of the beginning of the tourism season, and then also with sea turtle nesting, although we do have a a an approach to be able to address sea turtle nesting. So in general, that's my summary, and of course, I'm always open to for questions, but um as we're starting to get closer towards construction, I will be, I'm I'm only an hour and a half, two hours away in Destin, so I hope to be here more often, so I'm always available for questions or presentations. And in order to keep you updated of where we're going with this, we've also talked about about websites of getting that, more information out on the web, so people can start looking at where dredges could possibly be, where we're going to be starting, so that we keep the general public informed of the progression of this project. So I'm open to any questions or comments.
One question really concerned me with this timeframe, and I think we can, what you've just presented here, or told this board, this timeframe, it can be done as, we don't want to use the word, we have off-seasons, we want to think we have twelve-month seasons here, but we do have lack seasons, and it can be worked within this time, timeframe, where it doesn't mess with the turtles and the little birds and the sea mouse and all that kind of stuff. Okay.
Yeah, correct. And we have a very small window to be able to do that of roughly over a six-month period. So it works well with that.
And it can be, this, this project can be done, a little here, a little here, a little here, and then by the time you get through, you got to go back here. We can do this project.
That is correct. We plan on starting at the southern end, which is the area that has the highest erosion, structures that are vulnerable at this point in time, and working our way north. And as part of that, is that there is criteria with sea turtle nesting season, that as long as that we can start conducting sea turtle nesting monitoring, thirty to sixty days prior to, and this is only if we're going to be getting into the beginning of sea turtle nesting season in May, that we are approved to relocate those nests, so that we can continue on a continuous progress, so that we don't have to stop and go to the north end, come back and cost additional money for re-mob within the project. So we already have the Gulf County Turtle Patrol ready. We've been working with them of setting up a program. They are approved by FWC and U.S. Fish and Wildlife to conduct any relocation, if that's the case. Really, in the beginning of turtle season, we don't really get that many in May-June. We do periodically, but the vast majority of them typically come in July and September, which we will be way outside of that.
I could, Mr. Chairman.
All right, and I'll come, let me ask him one more, Commissioner, if I may, and then I, it's in your district there, and I'm sure, I know you, all right, we're talking about 1.5 million cubic yards.
Yes, sir.
That's, we're going to put that word approximately in there, 1.5 million, all right. This dredge, or a dredge, can move approximately how much sand, let's say, in an hour or a twenty-four-hour period?
Typically, they can do about a minimum of about 15,000 cubic yards a day.
A twenty-four hours, about 15,000?
That's over a twenty-four-hour period.
Fifteen thousand, okay, that's very important. Cubic yards.
And that's one of the smaller dredges.
Okay, a smaller one, and a twenty-four hour, we really don't, all right, all right, fifteen thousand, okay, that into, that's 1.5. Okay, and next question, and I'm going to yield over here to the commissioner that represents that district. What was my question, oh, twenty-four hours? Yes, yeah, you said, so this dredge could work twenty-four, seven?
Yes, sir.
To work in this timeline. All right, well, all right, that's it for me. I'm going to want to yield over to Commissioner McCrone.
If I could, Mr. Nebraska, so everyone knows, the county staff has been way out in front on this. We've been waiting, once again, on the fish and wildlife opinion, and that's been the holdup, so everyone knows. There's been a lot of frustration over this last storm about erosion, and it's not the county. So everyone knows, if you could elaborate on that, it went, you know, so-
The county has always been great to work with. They've always been very supportive, they've always given us the resources that we've needed in order to pursue this project, that the, and it's all comes down to U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the Army Corps of Engineers. No, I wholeheartedly support county staff. And, and the other thing is too, and if I may take it one step further, is also DEP and their Erosion Control Program through beaches has always been very supportive of this project. I've always ranked it very high in terms of funding. So that's another group that's been very supportive of this.
Other commissioner? Commissioner? Anyone that's staffed on is very important.
Okay, well, again, I'm always available to you.
I truly am, because I know, I've been seven years, and I've been fighting this thing for seven years, and that, you're right, that U.S. Fish, remember this, if you don't remember anything else, Washington don't make this thing. And they do, they won't admit they make this thing.
Yes, sir.
County has. Hopefully, we're going to wrap this thing.
Yes.
We're looking forward to it.
Oh, thank you. And again, we're always available to you.
Have a good, safe trip back.
Thank you.
We'll see you, we'll see, be seeing you pretty regularly. Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen. Number six, Gulf Air Homeowners, Gulf Air Homeowners Association. Ms. Don, are you here this morning? Come on up, young lady.
You missed me last time.
You what?
You missed me.
Who?
I wasn't here last time, I was supposed to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry. I felt ill, I couldn't make it. I'm Donna Smolko, from Gulf Air Homeowners Association. I've come, this is my third visit. We've tabled it every time, so you can do more research. And I really don't have too much more to say than what I presented before. I talked to Mr. Rogers earlier this week to give him a heads up, Commissioner Rogers, and I don't know what has been found as far as our plans to close the east end of Gulf Air with, without obstructing Seashore Drive at all. Without obstructing it. It would be at the very, very end of Ocean Ridge Drive, and it would run the whole length of the east end of Gulf Air fence. So did we find anything out that would stand in our way of doing this? Because last time, if you recall, I brought your attention that Mr. Durin in Phase Four had made a one-foot homeowners association piece of property all the way around Phase Four. So, Mr. Durin? Yeah, Victor. So I, did, has any been, have you found anything out, Mr. Novak?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just to follow up, the county's position still remains at that easement, and that access through that road goes through that cul-de-sac. So we, the county hasn't changed its position, I've looked into it, we still retain that access. I know Ms. Smolko has her paperwork, I've looked over that, as well as what we have in terms of our access down that road. So our position doesn't change. I know the issue, also simultaneous with that, was when the sidewalks were done through the DOT project, of the county coming back and looking at that access. So I know that issue still remains, up for you all commissioners to consider, but our position doesn't change with regards to our property rights and our access along that road.
Did you go look at the property?
I've been on it many times.
Okay, but it doesn't go, where we, where we're planning on putting the fence does not go through the cul-de-sac?
Only a portion of what you're talking about, obviously, affects the cul-de-sac. That access and that road is much more, covers much more area than just the cul-de-sac. I understand what you're saying. A fence anywhere along that road would restrict the access that the county retains.
The access to what, sir?
That is a public access, that is a public road right there, that we have right now to remain, to access the property behind Gulf Air.
Yes, Seashores.
That's correct.
We were going to put the fence on Seashores.
My understanding is that that fence is going to stop the access up and down from where you would now have a pedestrian access. It's not, it's not vehicular access at the time, it's just golf carts and bikes and foot trail, as I understand it, that I've walked up and down, is that correct?
There are cars coming through there.
All right, I don't, I don't think the county has cleared it to where they can, but I could be wrong.
I can drive a truck, a F-100, F-150 pickup truck through that access.
Okay.
Without a problem.
Okay, and, and so, that, that's not for me to debate, I, I'm just, the county doesn't change its position with regards to its access and its right to access that property. If Gulf Air takes a step, I'd ask them to formally notify the county, put it in writing as to what they propose to do, and then I could sit down with their attorney or their board of directors, and I'm happy to discuss it and have an open dialogue with them. But again, the county's position with regards to its historical access and its rights along that property does not change. And I have looked at it, and I have walked it, and I've been up there with the staff.
Ms. Don, let me say this, and I'm going to turn over to Commissioner Rogers, whose district that's in. I've been out there a lot on it, and I will not vote to close. Now, I'll vote to improve it to where people, it's more, that, what we're talking about, it more serves Gulf Air.
Why?
People, well-
We have two entrances.
Well, let me, let me finish, if you would, please. All right. There's people that live there close to it. We want to set it up, bicycles, people want to walk through there, wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs come through there, golf carts, carts. People can come out of Gulf Air, flip right down, if they want to go down Americas, it's a golf cart, to the, I think there's Dollar, Dollar General there, if they want to flip right down to the service station. It's a convenience for the people of Gulf Air. It's not that much for the people of Saint Joe Beach, but that's the whole thing. Now, as far as vehicles going through there, at a later date, there's landowners behind there, we might not, some board sitting here might open that up all the way through. We have, we're not giving up our right of way there, and we're not that, but this is a convenience for the people of Gulf Air. Now, I, I don't understand why they would want to, but you can't come out the other entrances. Why, if you live right here, when you can flip right down through there, I'll say, we can put up no trucks, no vehicles, we can do that, we can do that. But I'm not going to restrict it to people riding bicycles through there, walking through there, golf cart, a motorized wheelchair. I'm not going to vote to do it. I just want to go ahead and put that on the record, I will not do that.
Okay. If we present a plan where we put up barricades that will allow golf carts to pass through, would you vote on that?
Chairman, can you legally, that being a county easement, can we even do that?
So, so the question then would be private and public, and the funding of the dollars. Between the liability issues, if the county put something in on its property and maintained it and was responsible for it, it could be permissible? If you have a private homeowners association offering those dollars, it wouldn't be my recommendation that you allow them to put those types of impediments out there. I know that you talked, there was a vote two years ago to cut the trees down in there to make it accessible for people to get up and down on bikes, golf carts, and walking trail. But you guys stopped there two years ago. I think it was Commissioner Macklemore at the time, had also made the discussion. So it wouldn't be my recommendation to you allow a private homeowners association to put up obstacles or whatever, the barricades, I guess is the word, in there on that private, public access.
One other question, I'm going over here. Can you give me, give me some reason why you want to restrict the people that live in that, in Gulf Air? That's who you'd be harming, you won't be harming the other people.
We took a vote last year when we sent out-
Last year? How long have you been over this association?
Three years.
How many?
How long have I-
How long have you been the president of this community?
I was a senator, now this is my first year as president.
And you've been in here in the good Gulf County how many years?
Three years.
Three years?
Nobody wants to serve, sir.
Well, that's what I'm looking at, so you're the one that-
It's not my idea.
It gets, gets violeyed, it's you, huh? You're just a messenger for them.
Yeah, on the message.
Three years, three years.
We took a vote in December to actually close, gate the community, gate the community from the front. It came very close to passing. Nonetheless, the person that put it on the ballot did not put a cost with it. And I can guarantee you, if they had put a cost, it wouldn't have. Because the cost to gate that community would probably be about $600,000.
Ma'am, do you realize those are county roads in there? Huh? Do you realize that?
Whoever put it forward-
Now, if you want to buy all our roads back and give us millions of dollars, you won't see another inmate in there, you won't see nothing.
I understand that. I do want to ask, so that at that meet, the meeting back when Mr. Grantland asked that that be left open, it was said it would be left open until the sidewalk was completed.
But the sidewalk was supposed to have, we asked them to extend it wider where you could use a golf cart. They didn't, they, DOT didn't, so that's the reason we're back here.
So that changes the demographic.
Why do you just want it closed?
Because last, two years ago, we had $28,000 in damages to our property. Twenty-eight thousand dollars.
From who? Whom?
From other communities coming in. People from surrounding communities, I don't want-
So you're saying the people in Saint Joe Beach?
No.
Are coming up there, Beacon Hill?
Basically, Saint Joe Beach, the teenagers.
So these people in Saint Joe Beach have deliberately come into Gulf Air and to soil your property?
They literally tore, tore off the, we gated the pool, and we made the fence go from eight feet to sixteen. They literally tied a truck to the gate and tore it off.
Did you report it to the Sheriff's Department?
I, they probably did. I wasn't living there then.
I don't know who this date person is.
Twenty-eight thousand dollars in damages.
Ms. Smolko, do you realize, those being county roads, you cannot gate that off?
That's another thing.
Ma'am, that's the law.
No, I mean, they don't, we have a man that's been in the community a long time that said that Ocean Ridge and Christian Curve was never adopted.
But we're not going to make that here. I want to, let me come over here to the commissioner.
Yeah. Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just, I know that this discussion's come up, Commissioner Rogers and I have talked about it, a recommendation. Private property owners can do, within LDR's comp plan, what they want on their property. Gulf Air owns tennis courts and common area and pools, they own those areas, they can do what they want on them, and they have every right to do that. What we're proposing and discussing right now is county property, and the discussion with Gulf Air, asking the county to do something, possibly to restrict pedestrian traffic. If Ms. Smolko has a formal request, I'd ask her, just if she can, give it to me, I'll review it, I'll discuss it with the staff, and we'll present it to you at the next meeting. And then from that formal request, you all can take action on that. I understand there's been discussions, there's been an active dialogue about the sidewalk on 98, how does it impact access to Gulf Air, coming on the backside. I can say to all five of you, it is without debate or dispute that the county accepted the adoption of those roads, those are your roads, you have access to those roads, the cul-de-sac that we're speaking to, and this trail goes directly through it. So if they have a formal proposal, I'd ask the board to submit it to me, and I know we'll review it and come back to you at the next meeting, and ask you to take a vote on it. It's hard for us to, and I know that you're having a discussion, but it's hard to isolate what exactly they're proposing. And if they can show us they want to fence something, if it's on their property, there's nothing to restrict you all from doing it. But, but the access that we're talking about, that I understand it, goes through the cul-de-sac, which goes on beyond that to Seashores, and that is a county access in your road, and that is your right.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Rogers, then we're going to move on. Any, anything?
I understand what you're talking about, trying to restrict the vehicles, and we have agreed in the past that, you know, we would work, we all, on restricting the vehicles. What the attorney said as far as getting, you know, diagrams, so everybody knows exactly what we're talking about, that would be a great help to all of us, not only the board, but the audience too. So yes, if you could please do that, you know, then, like I said, you know, I understand, I don't, don't disagree with you at all about having vehicles riding through there and destroying stuff, you know?
Yeah. I can add a couple of comments to things that I've listened to.
Then we got to move on.
Listen to, I know. Waist Pro, the truck in our neighborhood has started backing up to reroute itself. There's no beepers when it backs up. There are no beepers. We have children in our neighborhood. Please address that, when you address Waist Pro, that's pretty important.
All right, and?
I, I don't know. I'm, I'm here for one reason, but then I really wanted to bring up the Waist Pro situation.
Good deal.
Because they've all of a sudden started backing up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Donna, thank you so much.
I was hoping on getting an answer before I went forward with the community, but I don't know if I'll be here next month or not, but thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, dear.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Novak.
Thank you. Ladies and-
Thank you, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, out of fourteen aisles, we will address aisle number ten, Beetry Nurse, David Taunton. David, are you here? Is David Taunton here?
Yeah, he is here, he's here.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Good morning.
My turn.
Good morning.
Alright, I know these folks been sitting here a long time, Don, congratulations. To this guy, I've admired for a long time, he has the uncanny ability to stay on top of a wider variety of topics than anybody I've ever known. But I'm, I'm gonna, I'll get right into this.
Mr. Taunton, can you? Mr. Taunton, can you state your name for the record and speak a little louder, we're having a hard time hearing you.
I don't speak loud, I never raised my voice in twenty years as a judge and never been on the table with my gavel. But, uh, I'll do the best I can.
Thank you.
I'm here to represent, uh, the children's home, really, uh, when it comes down to it. I've got, uh, two baskets here. I prayed about this a lot, my wife said, don't do it. But I read, uh, in Second Timothy, the twenty-fourth verse, it said, "My servants strive not," but it said, "in gentleness go before all men." And it said, "Teach and be patient." And then it said, "In meekness instruct those that oppose you, and leave the rest to me." That's exactly what I'm going to do. Yeah, I read a couple of weeks ago in, in the Star Paper, some, uh, an article that, uh, entitled, "Storm Season Begins, Restoration Months Away." And, um, Don knows, and most of you guys are kind of new on here, uh, that, uh, I've been in constant contact since Hurricane Gustoff about the possibility of the children's home being involved in the resta- restoration. That's about ten years or so ago, started out five hundred thousand yards, and now, uh, someone told me that, uh, Mr. Dombrowski, what did, what the figure did, is up to now, one point?
Five, one point five maybe, cubic yard.
I talked to Warren yesterday, it was one point two, so, I don't know why it'd be next. But the, the article concerned me because it says in part that, uh, it talks about the Corps and the difficulty in getting, um, the permit, but then it goes on and says, quote, Warren, "The money is in place, the money is waiting on permits. With permits in hand, the project would be put on, out for bid, and that would take at least another days. Jaeger noted that few companies are even in the field to bid, and any company securing the contract would need time sixty to ninety days at, at the least to mobilize. And so even if the federal permit is approved in July, it is likely that the earliest a project could start is early November. Our best case scenario is November." And when I read that, it's pretty obvious to me, we're not in the picture, you know? And that doesn't surprise me a whole lot, but it concerns me. You know, a lot of times a delay in a project is one purpose, that's to make sure the money's going to the right pockets. And what has happened here is that, and I know there's been more erosion, but, um, the numbers have gotten bigger and bigger till now, the, it's pretty convincing that nobody put the dredging companies could produce that amount of sand. Well, what you fellows need to know is that I have certi- certification from J and M testing, Mr. Sheldon Beal, that we have in fifteen acres of our sand source, one point five seven three million yards of sand. I don't get upset very often, but I was a little bit concerned when it was reported to me that Mr. Dombrowski made the remark at a public hearing, that the Taunton sand is not wide enough. I want to pass out some pictures of, of the Taunton sand. James gonna help me? This is a Taunton sand. It's not wide enough. That bothered me. Especially when Dr. Jennifer Koch, at the time she came, she was the Director of the State D E P Beach Restoration Products. And she sat there with me on that sand, this pile of sand, and she said, you know, this is the prettiest sand I have ever seen. It'll be much better for beach restoration than that they pump out of the Gulf because the grain is larger and it'll be more stable. A few days later, I got a test result from, uh, Ms. Koch. Rated a ten plus on the, on, uh, on, on the report. I called her and I said, Ms. Jennifer, what, uh, are we out or something?
No, 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 had him on in three minutes, he.
Three minutes?
Had him in five.
Five, oh, I won't get anywhere.
I made the motion to let him continue.
Man alive. I, I was so about, I feared it would be fifteen minutes, so I prepared fifteen minutes.
We can extend the fives. Well, we just did, we just did.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. I, I said, what does this plus mean? She says, well, um, we have a state monthly color chart. It goes from one to ten, your sand is wider than any sand on the chart, and it's the whitest sand we have ever tested at D E P. So then I, I read this article and I start, start doing a little research, and I come across all kind of, uh, problems with, uh, offshore dredging. You know, good Lord put some things in place because they serve a purpose. One of the early on projects of, of, um, the Corps was, um, to improve the flood control of the Kissimmee River. And it had the real meandering, beautiful curves in it. So they were going to improve the flood control by taking and dredging across those, does that sound familiar? Those meandering curves, so the water would get to the Gulf faster, or bay, wherever it goes down there. Afterwards, they found out that they had only increased the problem with the flooding into these meandering curves. What they did was force the water out through the floodplains that seeped down then through the, uh, to the aquifer, replenishing the vegetation and the, and the trees that were located in the floodplain. And actually, they destroyed thousands of acres of wetlands in that project. Well, a lot of these projects are not what they appear to be. Now, I've got these, uh, I'm not going to get far, man alive. This is frustrating. I've got these two baskets here. When I, when I ask, well, where do you stand on the beach renourcement? One is always, well, I'm going to wait, and I'm going to compare apples to apples. Well, I brought some apples here, two baskets of apples. This, this represents the offshore dredging. Some fine looking apples, man alive. Oh, that one's, that one got a little problem with it, but let's look at this. That represents the Corps of Engineers. And I don't know if you're familiar with it or not, but there's an article that was in the Palm Beach Post years ago that says, "Dredging Company Is Tainted By Bidding Scandal." "A nationwide bid rigging scandal that broke in nineteen eighty-eight offered a sobering glimpse of how much money is at stake in pumping sand onto eroding beaches and the links some companies are willing to go to get." Says, "The nation's biggest dredging company paid eight point two million dollars in federal fines to, and agreed to pay more than three point seven million in Florida in a settlement that included a Delray Beach project. Also paid an additional million for damage done to reefs in Dade County. Three Great Lakes dredging company officials went to prison." You know, we talking about these dredge companies waiting on the Army Corps of Engineers? The Army Corps of Engineers and the dredge, dredge companies, they're like this, two peas in a pod. When they get their money lined up, you'll get the permit. This is the last of the three apples, I'll, I'll hold it up later, in that bag. This represents the spokesman, usually, it's kind of like the coach, kind of like Dombrowski, for the dredging industry, smooth operator. They're a professional team, I guarantee you. That's their team, and that's what they do. Another early on project was, uh, at Cape Canaveral, nineteen fifty-one. They went in to dredge a, a channel. The local landowners adjacent to that, this forty mile stretch of Cocoa Beach. They said, well, what's this going to do to our beaches? And they assured them absolutely nothing, that the effects of dredging only extend out a few thousand feet. Well, studies show that up until nineteen fifty, over the past seventy or eighty years, the beach was growing by an average of two feet a year, by nature, two feet a year. But the year after this dredging took place, these landowners, the beach started losing fifteen feet per year, from two feet gaining to fifteen feet losing. After seeing this go on and on and on, these landowners finally filed a two hundred million dollar lawsuit for the government's unlawful taking of their property, as guaranteed under the Fifth Amendment of, of Constitution. One of the anomalies of the environmental age, this is written by Warren Brooks, he's an award-winning journalist, does investigative writing. It's one of the strange things, one of the things that make it appear one way, but actually is the other, he says, "Is that the Corps of Engineers has become the alleged protector of wetlands when it traditionally has been one of the biggest enemies, especially tidal wetlands and beach erosion. There is growing evidence that the main reason we are losing beach shoreline at such an alarming rate is not sea level rise, but the destruction of natural beach protection systems by the Corps of Engineers and its multi-billion dollar dredging lobby." We spent how many million dollars that was raised by the last referendum? How much was it? That's alright, you know, you know, many millions of dollars. And the Corps went out there and approved a dredging project that removed the protective berm in front of part of, of this cape, part of your cape. And what they did, they pumped that protective berm that's out there for one purpose, that is, you know, you have the outer berms, and you have this, um, sandbar that we call it when we go swimming. And that outer berm, what it does, it clips off the bottom of those huge waves that are coming in there, so that the sandbar then can soften the blow, handle the waves, and it goes gently against the shore. But when you remove that protective berm that God put out there to protect this Cape Sandblaze, exactly what will happen, exactly what did happen. It didn't wait until the next hurricane come, not even the next tropical storm, uh, tropical storm. It, with the first strong thunderstorm that came through, reached up there, that old ocean and Gulf, and, and pulled its sand back out, five hundred thousand yards overnight. Another argument I hear sometimes is, and Don, I think you've told me this, I've got to make sure that taxpayers get the biggest bang for their dollar. They didn't get much bang for that dollar, did they? Biggest bang for the bucks, I think, biggest bang for the bucks. One thunderstorm, five hundred thousand yards of beach sand eroded because the Corps of Engineers was going to fix the problem. Just bring it home, world, you've been on the river a lot. Uh, you fellows, I don't know how much you fish or anything. They were coming to fix our river, remember that? We, uh, were poor, but Bird Parker, he would allow our family to go to his bee apron down the Virginia Cut, and there we would camp out because November was, uh, not interfering with the harvesting of honey. He had his bee apron centered right in the middle of the biggest Tupelo forest in the world. But then he got a notice from the Corps, he said, you got to move your bee apron. He said, we fixing to stop that slew up. Now, this is a majestic slew, Virginia Cut, along with, with gum drift slew and, and madder slew is, are the tributaries that has sustained the biggest wetlands, largest Tupelo forest in the world, forever. They pumped that pile of sand, a pile of sand right in the middle of that slew, destroyed the slew forever that, that the Indians had even used to get from the, the, uh, Liberty County Bank down to the Burgess Creek where the citrus trees grew, and they would go through and, 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 you know, now I wish the Indians had fought a little harder. If they, if they had known what the government, that they'd finally deeded this property to, was going to do to their natural paradise, I think they would have fought to the last man. Now, just recently, I was contacted by Dan Togsmire, who's trying to get some of the Restor Act funds to re- to restore that, uh, that gum, gum drift slew. He said, we've gone in there, we can't even find it. Said, maybe, I heard you were an old timer, you can go in there and show us where it used to be. And I went in there, and there were stretches of it that absolutely was no clue of where this slew used to be, that we used to run up and down wide open with our motor boats when we were little and fishing, have the best time, because the Corps, in addition to pumping that pile of sand in the mouth of that majestic gum dri- uh, 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 Virginia Cut, just adjacent to that, they had pumped a mountain of sand, which has come to be known Sand Mountain. And they, on high water, would go in there at nights, during the night, and take their bulldozers and push that sand off into the current, and it would flow across the wetlands and settle in the lowest areas, and that's how that slew now, three miles of the crow would fly. Nothing left. This year, the grandson of Sheriff Parker, yesterday I saw Anne, I said, what's Buddy doing? She said, he's sitting at the house staring at the walls. Buddy got his neck broke, sawing trees. He went back, reverted back to only, only other thing he knew, and that was taking honey. And I said, why is it, Anne? He said, because this year, we only made four hundred pounds of Tupelo honey, which is less than a tenth of what we were hoping for. Now, I understood that this Restor Act money was to stimulate the local economy. I just look around, uh, is one in here? Okay. Now, let me get this other basket, I got to hurry. Man alive, give me two minutes. This little aisle here, this, this is, hey, that, that's, that's the professional team right there. This is a Upland sand operation here. This represents the workforce. If we provide the sand for, that will do the work and be paid. The people like, uh, Alan Brock, he's hauling our sand down there for this Cape Shoals project, now trying to keep those houses from falling in. He's got two little dump trucks, he struggles, he's in and out of the hospital a lot. Represents people like, uh, Lyle Ait, he's got six trucks. Represents people like the Highsmith Boys, who I got a call about this time yesterday from Bill, and he said, Judge, my daddy's dying. And I'll be going there after this, getting ready to preach his funeral, hopefully they won't have me on some sort of clock. It represents not only that, but the, the local stores that'll sell the gasoline and tires, and the Napa stores that'll sell the fittings, and, and that money would go towards sending kids to school and buy, buy lunch monies, and, and that's where the money will go if you use the local sand, Upland sand. As opposed to this big apple in here, that represents the dredging, one big check, done and gone. So it's more than apples to apples, you see what I'm getting at? This represents, uh, me, I'm the spokesman, I'm the Dombrowski of this little trip here. Ain't much to me. But I'll tell you the truth. I won't trick you. I won't tell you that it's not going to impact your beach property. Because what we're in here, this other company is, it's all about the money, I guarantee you, it's all about the money. The Rivers and Harbors Act of nineteen sixty-nine, guess who they gave the responsibility of determining and assessing the value to wetlands done in, in the United States? None other than the Army Corps of Engineers. If any individual or individuals had done the damage to Virginia Cut and to that river swamp. If any individual or individuals had done the damage to Virginia Cut and to that river swamp that the Army Corps of Engineering, the dredging industry has done, Fort Knox couldn't mint enough money to pay the fines. But yet we hold Army Corps of Engineers almost in reverence, trembling in fear. Wonder when they gonna issue that permit? They'll issue the permit when you get the money lined up. This last apple, that's my favorite. That's who I am, what I am and where I am. Children's Home, I don't go anywhere. And it would receive royalties on the inland sand product. Did I get, did we get these other pictures out? Get this, uh, got it, spread that out for Eddie. Got it, okay, can, can, can you see that? That's where we started our, our product, project. That's the sand now. And you look at this picture, and you say, "Where is that, the Bahamas?" It's right here in our county. And furthermore, mentioning the Bahamas, there's one other article I want to point out to you, and it's in New York Times, and it says, "Where Sand is Gold." And it's talking about counties down on the East Coast that are way further along in this dredging project than we are. Talks about Broward County, their berms are all dredged out. They've been all defeated by the Army Corps of Engineers pumping it up there, it going back out, pumping it up. And now the, the berms, which used to, used to be there to protect the coast, not there anymore. They're sitting ducks, and they're saying, "What are we gonna do for sand?" You know what Broward County is contemplating doing for sand? Grinding up recycled glass and renursing their beaches. Dade County, and we are in contact with Broward County, we are in contact with Dade County. I'm about to get impatient, let's send our sand down there. Dade County is contemplating getting their sand from the Bahamas. The only thing is, there's a federal statute that prohibits stand, uh, sand being employed for beach renursment as long as there is a domestic source. Well, we in Honeyville, but we're still a domestic source. And if we have to, we eventually will, we'll rig up, I'm talking to Jim Townsend about how we can get sand down there. But listen, I, I said, uh, this, this is, this is my, this is my children's home. Started right here, right across, over there in that building, this middle-aged couple. "Ward, you looking at me like a man I'm bored to death." You will never, you will never attend a more important session of this board than you are right now. And this middle-aged couple came in to me, and they said, "Judge," said, "Our sixteen-year-old teenager is pregnant. She's a straight A student and cheerleader, and we don't want her to have an abortion, will you take the baby?" That baby was born December the twenty-sixth, the day after Christmas, nineteen seventy-eight. We took the baby. Today, that baby is thirty-eight years old, I don't know, is Adam in the, Adam's not here? He owns and operates Taunton Trust. He's married to a beautiful wife and has two brilliant, beautiful kids. And then another time, a lady and her husband came out there and said, "Our daughter's pretty rough, you know, and she's having a time, and she's pregnant, and we don't know what, what problems the baby will have, but will you take it no matter what?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am, we'll take it no matter what." Just shortly after that, the fallen rain said, "The baby's been born, born premature, they had to fly, flight him from Bay Medical to, to Pensacola to Sacred Heart's Neonatal Ward." I, 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 Ward, I went over there, and, and he had needles in his forehead, needles in his arms, all kind of tubes, needles in the bottom of his feet, and I looked through the, that window, that little two-pound baby. Lady came up to him and tapped me on the shoulder, and she said, "Are you Judge Taunton?" I said, "Yes, ma'am." She said, "But don't you know, if you take that baby, if you adopt that baby, you will be straddled with a huge hospital bill." Said, "But let us have him," talking about the state, "we won't have to pay the bill." I said, "Ma'am, that baby's ours, no matter what." This is his son. And that baby's James. We paid a huge hospital bill, he was worth it. Now, what I'll do, if we were to be able to, to work something out for the inland sand, I'll take it and I'll finish this project that we have at the children's home, we'll finish dredging this lake out. I'll send five kids to college this year, at one point, we had fif, uh, had eleven in college at one time. And we will continue our summer counts program, where we have every year over five hundred kids come in and play in this lake, slide down that hundred ninety-seven-foot slide, and have the time of their life. Now, you got a choice, which basket, which basket. We'll work out something with you. In fact, I'll go ahead and tell you what we'll do. Your money's not gonna go far enough with the Corps, that's one point five million. They'll have to wait till more pockets of money come in, more pockets of money. But what we'll do, we, you know, I tell you, uh, apple to apples. Where my, I bought this apple, see it, at the IGA, and the lady said, "I can't believe you're gonna buy that apple, you sure you want it?" And I said, "Yes, ma'am, I do." This apple is the Corps of Engineers. See it, rotten, rotten to the core. And I tell you what you can do, you can buy a lot of rotten apples at a cheap price. You can let them just continue to destroy that protective berm and, and subject the people and property owners on the Cape to, no matter what, no telling what, no telling what. Or you can, you can start in this basket, and you can see where the money goes, and you can, as far as the money goes, you can go that far. If you'd done this to start with, that five hundred thousand yards would still be there. A thunderstorm wouldn't have washed it away, because it would have had that protective berm out there. For twenty-two dollars a yard, which ten dollars would go for the, for the costs of producing the sand, including the royalty to the children's home, which is the most important part of me. I've talked to the, the people that would haul it, these local people, all local people. Everybody that works would be local. There would be one dollar, that's for handling and loading the trucks, you're up to eleven dollars. There would be eight dollars a yard for hauling the sand, and the driver said they could, trucker said that, that would work for them. There'd be two dollars a yard for placing the sand, and I've got contractors that said they'd do it for that. And there would be one dollar a yard that goes to, guess who? The local engineer, the in-house engineer, that is well capable of handling this project, not going out there and searching for some berm, and not having to study what this is gonna do to this. And for twenty-two dollars a yard, you could put four hundred and fifty thousand yards of sand, starting in the most critical areas. That would be nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars. And I believe Warren said he had ten million, five hundred thousand, that would leave six hundred thousand in contingencies. And we don't have to wait sixty to ninety days to set up. We don't have to wait any of this time. I talked to my lawyer, Charles Carlson, he said, "The, what the board could do, if they got the backbone, they could declare this entire project an emergency, just like you have for Cape Shoals." Because it is, you, you've destroyed the protective berm. They're sitting there, wa, watching for the height of the hurricane season to come up, totally helpless. And you could identify those critical areas, and we could start tomorrow, tomorrow, producing this sand. And we could have that four hundred and fifty thousand yards probably produced before tourist season starts back. And we would put about seventy people, all local people, to work in the process. And we would allow this money that was generated to, to, to promote the local economy to be taken out of the banks and put in the pockets of hard-working people. Jake left those, those boys with those old beat-up trucks, but I tell you what else he left them. He left them with a work ethic second to none, and they're ready to work. Why don't you give them a chance? Thank you. I, I went over my time, Ward.
No, no, you, you good.
I'm good. But I waited a long time to have them with this thing.
Ladies and gentlemen, got the one, two, three more items in the public, uh, we can either recess for a few moments, or we can try to knock this on out. Board, what do, what do?
Knock it out.
Let's knock this out and go, the next will be item number eleven, ladies and gentlemen. Going to open bid number sixteen seventeen dash thirty-two, it's replacing the roof, the South Gulf Fire Department. Ms. Roberts, are you going, you and Madam Clerk, you gonna take that?
Yes, sir.
All right, what is it, sixteen seventeen thirty-two?
Good morning, today is July twenty-fifth, and we have several bids to open today. First bid is sixteen seventeen thirty-two for replacement of the roof at the South Gulf Fire Station. First bid is
Palmetto.
Palmetto Plantation.
Okay.
Palmetto Plantation's bid for labor materials to remove existing metal roof and replace the metal roof is thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Next bid is Kathy Construction. Only one copy provided. Kathy Construction has a two-part plan, the removal and replacement of existing metal roofing sheets with twenty-four gauge roofing panels, uh, for a total twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, also, they note application of R thirty open cell foam insulation per code is also required, and that's a total of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. Total cost, uh, is thirty-four thousand dollars even.
Next bid is Rodney Hall Roofing. Only one copy provided.
Um, Rodney Hall Roofing, uh, also to remove the, uh, metal roofing and install twenty-four gauge, uh, sheet metal and trim, and blown-in insulation. The one part of, of their bid is the roof with R thirty insulation at twenty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars. Another option is, um, for the roof with R twenty-one insulation at twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars. Um, and it mentions their five-year warranty.
Last bid is Dupree Custom Metal Roofing. One copy provided.
Dupree Custom Metal Roofing, um, they also do the removal of existing and insulating, um, their labor material total is fourteen thousand, one hundred dollars, offering a payment plan.
Uh, question, this last one, Dupree, a fourteen thousand, one hundred payment plan.
That's the total cost, but they offered a payment plan, two-part payment plan.
I'm a little lost here, Ms. Chairman, uh, Lee, what was the specs?
Uh, yeah.
Was there any specs?
I have no idea, nobody mentioned any of this to me. I'm not aware of any of it.
You sent it out for bid.
Nobody asked me about any specs or anything. I did send it out for bid.
I think we need to table this till we can look at it, uh. Or just, what's going on here? I'll make a motion, we table it. All right, there we go, motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Whitfield to table. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience that can serve us tabling this? Motion pass five and oh. Uh, sound like they got the cart ahead of the horse, so let's, uh, Lee, being you over the building, we need to know what we're gonna do down there.
I'll put in the motion for Lee to handle, if we need to rebuild whatever, if you want to do that.
Well, we can do it, all right, motion here, give me a second.
Second.
We're here, Commissioner McQuinn, any other board discussion, any one opposition, motion five and oh. All right, ladies and gentlemen, uh, the complete item number eleven, now we have a dock renovation, Dead Lakes Park, going to open bid number sixteen seventeen dash thirty-five. Yeah, here it is, right here.
Sixteen seventeen thirty-five dock renovations for the Dead Lakes Park. First bid is Palmetto Plantation.
Palmetto Plantation's bid for labor and stainless steel screws to repair the docks at Dead Lake is thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Next bid is Kathy Construction.
Um, Kathy Construction's bid for removal and replacement of existing docks with stainless steel and materials is a total cost of twenty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars.
Next bid is E. Layley Associates.
Total bid for this vendor, um, E. Layley Associates is nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Next bid is Michael L. Anderson Incorporated.
Michael An- L. Anderson bid total cost eighty thousand dollars.
And the last bidder for this project is Robertson Roberts Incorporated.
Robertson Roberts Inc. bid is a total price of twenty thousand, five hundred and five dollars. That concludes our bids.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Roberts, thank you. All right, gentlemen, this in the district I represent, this was a, I'm correct, a fifty thousand dollar grant. And, uh, we have some more projects up there we would like to do, so, you know, I don't wanna eat all this grant money up on this one project, but I think we could, I see a couple in here that I think we could work with, hopefully, if they meet all the requirements and everything. So, I just wanted to say that. And Commissioner Whitfield, you fixed to come down this same road here in a little bit, you got a fifty thousand dollar grant, and I know, knowing you, you're gonna wanna try to get quality but stretch as far as you can, you don't want one project to eat up all your money. Okay, I just wanted to say that. All right, any questions on this, uh, anybody got any questions? Sure, go ahead, yeah.
People that bid this, engineers or somebody engineered it, what kind of pre-bid qualifications do they have to meet? Do they, do they have to meet any? How do we know if they just built one job in their life, or is it, been in it for ten years? That's the kind of things that keep me awake at night. Nineteen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars is not bad, if I'd, for Robertson Roberts at twenty thousand, five oh five, we're well aware of their ability. But, uh, unless you got pre-bid qualification, you don't know what you're dealing with. Somebody may know this, E., whatever associates, have we ever worked with them, do we know anything at all about them? I'm just saying, if they bid it, if we let them in to bid, they ought to be considered. They'll not be tossed out.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Doc?
We, um, I guess I'm boundless to what Florida statute says they have to, you know, hold what license they hold in order to do certain type of work. It's gonna be roofing workout, be roofing contractors licensed, uh, approved by the state of Florida. I would say if you table for review and then during that review process, check on the references and see what they've done in the past, hopefully, hopefully the low bid would be a good bid. If it's not, go to the next low bid and hopefully it will meet all, all requirements.
This grant, it's good for what, two? I think, uh, Miss Pinsky's wanted originally, well, we got two years, I know, got a head on one before it'd been approved and we had to bite the bullet on it.
I think you probably have a couple of years.
Couple of years, so another month's not gonna hurt us.
Yep.
Two-year frame, okay. I don't know.
I know Robertson Roberts and I know Kathy.
Yes, sir.
You wanna table this for? Yeah, let, let's do that.
I'll make a motion, we table it.
All right, got a motion, I hear a second.
I second the motion.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Quinn, Whitfield, any further tabling this motion? Anyone out there? Not, motion five and oh, we'll bump it down the road here and see what we got. We've got a little time to work with, truly do. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're down to item number thirteen, which is the last before we go into public discussion. This part always like, let me get old sheet sheet out of here. Here we go, uh, Mister, uh, I've forgotten his name over there, Mister Larry? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll move forward pretty quick.
Quasi.
Uh, this, I've got one variance request from Mister William H. Carr Jr., parcel ID zero four two five five dash zero eight zero R, section sixteen, township seven, south range eleven west. He's requesting a ten-foot variance into the twenty-foot roadside building setbacks off Beach Streets, Beach Street and Adventure Avenue. Um, last Monday, your planning development review board, uh, voted to recommend, uh, the board of county commissioners by two oh vote with one abstention to approve this ten-foot variance into the twenty-foot roadside building set, setback. And, Mr. Chairman, if you would, if you'd ask if anyone wishes to speak on this item and, and then possibly waving quasi-judicial hearing?
All right, is anyone here, Mister husband, do you reckon, do you, you do not represent? Here we go, it's Jenna. Good, I don't know if it's, let's just say good noon, how's that sound, okay?
Gina Johnson, first engineering environmental, for the record.
Mr. Chairman, before, before she starts, would you, would you ask everyone if anybody wishes, have, have any issues with waving quasi-judicial?
And, uh, is anyone just wanna speak for, or, yes, or any, anyone else? Yeah, I don't have anyone.
Then take a vote.
There you go.
Wave.
Make the motion, we waive it.
All right. Now, motion to waive, we got a second by Commissioner Rogers, all in favor of waiving the quasi? Pass five and oh. Jenna, go ahead.
Okay, so this is Lot Two, back in, uh, St. Joseph's Shores. And as you know, there are, uh, right-ofways back there that, that have not been, there's no roads constructed. Uh, Mister Carr has constructed a, a lime rock and dirt drive along Beach Street, uh, crossing Sandblasts Avenue and going through his first-tier Lot Five onto Watermark Way for access to this parcel. Um, so he's, he's requesting a ten-foot, uh, variance setback along Beach Street and also, uh, Adventure Avenue.
Anything else?
That's it.
Right. Anybody in the staff? You said it was a two oh vote?
Two oh vote, one abstention.
All right.
Good.
Anyone in the public? And there was any, anyone else? All right. What's the recommendation? It was two and oh, okay.
Yep. If I could add, Mr. Chairman, uh, these are the recommendations, uh, from your planning board. Uh, the hearing was part, properly, properly noticed, uh, there was a waiver of quasi-judicial hearing. Myself and the planning board deemed the substantial completeness of the application and all procedural steps, uh, required in your LDR.
Right.
For your vote.
All right, gentlemen, we'll go to vote now. Entertaining a motion, we either approve or reject this, uh, and, uh, recommendation.
Who's this?
That's, uh, that's Jimmy's, I think, that's your district, Jim?
Yeah.
I'll follow suit with him.
Brad, you didn't see no problem with it, do you?
I don't, the, the bottom line is, he, he is actually, the right-ofway has blocked his access in there, and he owns about three lots, four lots in there. Um, so he's actually accessing through one of his first-tier lots. So, I, I mean, he's got a hardship there.
All right. We'll move, approve. Second. Second by Commissioner McCrone, all right, any further board discussion? One else? Not any opposition? Pass five and oh, thanks, Jen. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're down now to the final of public discussion. Uh, at this time, I'm open to the public. One has anything before the board? Did you fill out the, uh?
My name's James Don'ton, my dad spoke a little bit about me. I, I, I just kinda wanted to reiterate a few things that he did, and I wanna challenge you guys as a board member, because you board members, in essence, these people in the community, we put you guys there to represent our business as a county as a whole. Uh, I, I, I would like to challenge you guys to go back to the initial, uh, beach renovation project, which was five hundred thousand yards. The property owners, uh, paid for that at their property taxes, correct? So, they paid for it at it. But I'd like for you to go a- and do your own research and, and take that total as a whole, what they paid, what the matching funds, the total budget for that job that was actually spent, not just on the dredge, but everything, engineering and all, divided by the five hundred thousand yards, simple math. Uh, a- a- and that gives you a, a standard to go by. Then I want you to reach deep a- and take BP funds that are supposed to, uh, and I know there's matching funds that come from the state, um, but take that money and benefit this county as a whole, put guys to work a- and, and see what the difference is, a- and look at it. And I challenge you guys to see, 'cause, uh, you know, how to make payroll, Mister McCrone, he has a business. You know, when you make these things on a day-to-day base, day-to-day basis, and you take ten million dollars, which you don't have enough money today to do one point five million yards. So, if you don't even have the money, why are we bidding it? So, look at what you can do, challenge yourselves to go out, do the research, and then look at what that money will do for our community as a whole, as the homeowners. How many times that thing will cycle through this county? Ten million dollars will cycle through this county, where its property taxes paid, where its taxes paid for, for schools, and that money gets circulated and recycled through this county. Yes, it may cost a little bit more, it may not. We, we're not truly comparing apples to apples because y'all didn't pay us a million dollars to come find our sand, we did. So, you pay an engineer to go offshore and find the sand deposits that, in essence, wiped out your berm. So, I, I challenge you guys for this community, for those landowners, and as a whole, to stimulate this economy with this project. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for taking time to come out and be with us this morning. This time, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We move.
Got the motion, second, all in favor of I? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.